This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson, Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. John Anchor, District 9. At-large counsel Travis Chambers, District 10. At-large counsel Lindsey McLemore, Clerk of Council and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good morning and welcome to the June 10th City Council meeting. As we prepare to begin our deliberating, we'll start as we always do and that's by offering a prayer from one of our local pastors. Today, we are really pleased to welcome to the lectern Dr. Ralph Hewling from St. James Missionary Baptist Church. Ralph Hewling, you want to come up and provide the invocation for us? If you would, hit that button, sir, and I'll get the light turned on.
Light, is it on?
Yes, sir, just leave it right there and it'll...
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Managers, and to this council, and to all those that assemble here in this august body, may we bow our heads and go to God. Most high God, Lord, to the giver of all good and perfect gifts, and heaven and father, we come thanking you for the gift of another day. And heaven and father, we pray for this council today, dear God, Lord, that you would infuse wisdom within them and help them, God, to create an atmosphere that is conducive to achievements for the residents of Muskogee County and the tri-city area. God, we thank thee for their work. And heaven and father, we know, heaven and father, that sometimes even in our best times, there are sometimes confusion. But help us, dear God, Lord, to remember Proverbs 14:8 where it says that "the wisdom of the prudent is to understand his way, but the folly of the foolish is deceit." Heaven and father, we thank thee, dear God, Lord, that this has been suggested that Columbus, Georgia is the 12th best-run city in the nation. And heaven and father, we also thank thee that recently it's been recognized as the most welcoming city east of the Mississippi River, and we understand that this didn't happen by coincidence. And so, God, we pray for this council today, heaven and father, that they will act and carry out their duties in wisdom. And we know that if any person lacked wisdom, the Bible says, "Let them ask of God, and he will grant them wisdom." So, we pray for the elected and we pray for those who were selected. God, we pray, heaven and father, Lord, for the terminated city manager and his family and for those who are carrying on in his stead. Help us to be forgiving in our community, one of each other, and let us be cognizant, dear God, Lord, that those that bless one another, you will bless them, and those that curse one another, you will curse them. Thank you, Lord. And God, we just pray for your divine presence in this meeting. It's in the matchless name of Jesus, who is my Christ, I pray. Amen.
Now, Dr. Hewling, thank you, sir. We appreciate that very much. Thank you for those words. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, just, ever, and for all.
All right, first order of business, approve the minutes from June 3rd. Do we have a motion and a second? Are there any edits or any discussion on the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. We are required by law to hold a taxpayer bill of rights public hearing. It's one of the more confusing things that we are asked to do each year, but it is intended to try to bring more awareness to the public as to the digest improvement and the value of a mill. So, we have our Director of Finance here and we have our tax assessor as well, but we'll begin with our City Attorney, Mr. Fay.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. This is the final hearing required by OCGA Section 48-5-32.1. It's required every year when the proposed estimated value of our tax digest is projected to rise. And like we said before, if you have a frozen homestead valuation, your taxes should not change for the upcoming year. Ms. Alexander, you can make a comment or two and we'll see if anybody's got questions. Got the Chief Appraiser here also.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Attorney, and our Deputy City Manager, Lisa Gutwin. As the City Attorney mentioned, this is the final notice of property tax increase hearing as required by state law. There are two types of increases that impact our tax digest. Those increases due to inflation and those increases that we have when new properties come onto the digest or when significant improvements have been made to existing properties. So, each year, the Board of Assessors is responsible for reviewing all the assessed the assessed value of all the taxable property in the county. And when there has been, again, an increase due to significant improvements or property sales, the tax assessors are required to reassess the value of the property. We're also required, the Tax Commissioner is also required to compute a rollback millage rate. That rollback millage rate is the rate that we would need to adopt in order to produce the same amount in total revenue from this year's digest that last year's digest produced. And so, when there is a proposed millage rate that is more than that rollback millage rate, which this, the millage rate that's been proposed with the mayor's budget is the exact same millage rate that was proposed last year. There is no increase in the millage rate itself. And so, the millage rate for Urban Service District 1 is 16.07 mils. For Urban Service District 2 is 10.09 mils and for Urban Service District 4, 9.19 mils. So, again, as the City Attorney mentioned, if you have a property that's under the homestead exemption, there would be no increase in the amount of taxes that you pay because your assessed value will not change regardless of your fair market value changing. If you do see an increase in your fair market value, that has no bearing on your assessed value under the homestead freeze. So, again, the Chief Appraiser is here and she can answer any specific questions that anyone from the public might have because as the City Attorney mentioned, this is a public hearing.
All right. Any questions around the table? Last go-round, Chief Appraiser is here. Anybody in the audience want to be heard on the taxpayer bill of rights hearing? Come on up and give me your name and address, please, sir.
Jason Hilton, 4898 Champions Way. Lived in Columbus my whole life, been an investor for 25 years here, bought about 1,300 houses. You know, Muskogee County, as everybody knows, we have a tax freeze and it's great for homeowners. But we do have the highest millage rate in the state of Georgia, it's 41 and 1/4. The state average is 25 mils. And, you know, if you buy a house, and I've bought plenty of houses where the property taxes that they're paying are $40 or $50, I'm like, well, no wonder I'm paying $6,000 because you're paying $50. And so, you know, as a property owner, you know, you have your tenants that, you know, they're paying, you know, we see their incomes, obviously, and as, we have to increase the rents in order to pay those property taxes. And when they roll off, so, you know, we'll appeal them, go in front of the Board of Equalization, get them frozen for three years, and they roll off, I think it's the 299D or whatever. And so, I had 40% of my properties roll off this year and they increased by 2 to 3X. So, you know, if we had a property that was valued at $50,000, it's now $100 to $150,000. And so, our property taxes have just skyrocketed again. And so, now, we've got to go and tell the tenants and let them know, hey, we've got to drastically increase your rent. If they can't pay it, you know, what do we do? Well, the next thing that you do is you have to stop doing maintenance. You have to decrease your capital expenditures. Well, we can't put a roof on it now. We can't put a new AC unit in it now because we don't have the money. And so, what we're asking for basically is, you know, in these neighborhoods where, you know, they're being assessed, say, at $150,000, that is a totally renovated owner-occupied property that's sold. That's where they're getting the comps, all right? If you have rental properties in those neighborhoods, they're not going to be, you know, we're not going to renovate them. Now, we can get it to that value, but we've got to spend $40,000, $50,000. Once we spend the $40,000 or $50,000, then we got to take it to market and sell it. But until we spend that $40,000 or $50,000, that property is not worth $150,000, it's worth $80,000, $90,000. And that's what we're saying is, you know, let us be taxed on the true value of what, you know, what we could sell it for to another property owner that's going to rent it out, not the owner-occupied renovated price. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Madam Tax Assessor, do you have any... That is a fact. The fact is, is that because of the freeze, if you have filed homestead, you're not going to be impacted year to year unless you've done some major remodeling, you've expanded the footprint. But for investors, non-owner-occupied property renters, there is a little bit of an impact every year.
It's a question of what comes first, the chicken or the egg? So, most investor-owned properties, particularly single-family residential homes, are actually valued using a methodology that capitalizes the income stream into a value. So, when investors raise their rents, we take those rent increases, that is the income stream, and that equates to a higher valuation. It's not a question of us raising value and them coming back and raising the rents. It's they've raised the rents and that's what's driving us to change values because we're looking at the income stream. It's one of three methodologies that we actually are required to use by the state of Georgia. We have to consider all three methods. So, we have to look at what sales in the neighborhood are selling for. We have to look what it would cost to rebuild that property with the same level of utility and depreciation. And then, we also have to consider what the income stream is on the property and capitalize that to a value. And we consider all three methods. It's required by law. And so, we, you know, we look at those and we then have to consider, you know, which is the most appropriate method for a property. If you have a one-of-a-kind property where you don't have a lot of sales or you don't have, you know, a lot of good income data, then maybe cost is the most appropriate. But if you have a residential unit and you've got lots of sales to determine that value, maybe market is the best methodology that you use. Or if you've got income-derived properties, office buildings, single-family residences that are renting, apartment complexes, that kind of stuff, income may be your best method. And we have to select the one that we have the best data for and that is the most appropriate methodology for that property. So, that's, it's one of the, one of the driving factors for when we see increases in single-family residences that are renting is the income stream on those properties.
All right, thank you. Counselor Crabbe?
Sir, I recommend that you appeal every single one of your properties.
He does.
Every single one of them because...
He does. He appeals a third every year.
Because all of those, all of those options that you just described does not reflect the value of rental properties. They're not selling, they're holding on to them. They, they may increase the cost of the rental, but for the most part, that's just to cover their costs of higher taxes or higher insurance or the cost of higher maintenance because everything has gone up. And what was the third one?
So, we use three methodologies. We use market, we use cost, and we use, we use income. And an income-derived property, if you have good income data indicating what the market is doing...
But you're looking at the gross, not the net.
No, no.
They have higher, they have higher costs to maintain that property.
We consider expenses as well. There are certain expenses that we're not allowed to consider, that we have to take out, okay? Debt service is one of them. They, and we can't allow a depreciation expense because that's built into cap rates. It's part of the recapture rate, which calculates for the lifespan of a property. And then, you can't use taxes as an expense when you're trying to calculate a value for taxation purposes. That's what they call a simultaneous transaction and it will skew your results.
Who can't use that?
We can't, by law, we cannot, because it creates what's called a simultaneous transaction because in our loaded cap rates, we already have a effective tax rate built into them.
But that's what's causing...
No, ma'am.
The higher taxes is what's causing the higher rate for the higher insurance rate.
Suzanne, let her finish.
It is causing a higher insurance, a higher rent rate because we have to cover the taxes.
And it's built into the cap rate. The taxes are built into the cap rate. If you, if you allow for the expenses of a, you know, to reduce from the net value, from the net income, the taxes, and then you have them built into your cap rate. So, your cap rate is now higher. You have now accounted for taxes twice. Higher the cap rate, lower the value. So, when you add in an effective tax rate onto your cap rate, you, and you allow them as an expense, you are now allowing them twice.
When you're saying "you," are you talking about you, the assessor?
No, I'm talking about the methodology. I'm talking about the methodology. The methodology and how things are calculated and what happens when expenses are taken off on one side and then built into a cap rate on the other side. Because when you have a higher cap rate and it's, say, your base cap rate is 8, your effective tax rate is a 1.65, and your recapture rate is a, oh, I don't know, a half. You have added a 1.65 percentage into that cap rate and that will lower the value of the property. The higher that rate is, the higher the overall cap rate is, the lower your property value is going to be. So, that's accounting for those taxes and that's accounting for those taxes specifically from Muskogee County because there's a formula that's used based on our actual millage rate that creates, that calculates what that effective tax rate is that's supposed to be built into the overall cap rate.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. I got a, Madam Tax Assessor, you made some comments that just raised some concern with me. I want to talk about that. But first, I want to address something that was said earlier. Just remember, on our taxing equation, 40% goes to the city and the operations and all, but that is a county and debt service and the, that is county and city, county and city. So, when you do the comparables throughout the state, you got to look at county and city. Now, the second part of that is the 60%, which is the school taxes, which, you know, they have their millage rate too and, you know, you can look at that however you want to. But when you, when you, when you look at that in comparison across the state, yes, it's true that we have one of the highest taxing rates in the state, but when you compare it and how other cities view their taxes, whether city or county or school taxes, it, you know, in some places, it's the city side of the operations is, I guess you can make the argument that it's reasonable. So, I'm just going to leave it at that. But a couple of things that were said. You were, at the end of your conversation, you were talking about cap rates and if, the way I look at that, you said higher cap rates and there should be a lower valuation. But you know, that's a, I think when you start talking about cap rates, that's a moving variable and it changes based on economic conditions and market conditions. And certainly, higher interest rates and inflation would drive up those cap rates, meaning that we should have lower valuations.
And we do in some cases.
In theory, we should have lower valuations, but what I'm hearing is people are saying we're getting higher valuations in the current economic conditions. So, market cap matter.
It does.
Cap rate matter changes with market conditions. And right now, with the high inflation and interest rates, you're telling me that valuations should be down, that you should be decreasing valuations.
And we do have some that are down.
Okay, well, and you may, but I'm just making that observation. The second thing is, you mentioned that higher valuations because the property owners who are secondary, tertiary, or people who are in business of renting and so forth, just because if they raise their rents, that that's going to reflect in how you increase their values. And that concerns me because people, property owners have to raise for various reasons. Again, it could be inflation. Again, it could be utility increases across the board. There's other factors out there that contribute to that. What you just explained to me, and I'm concerned about, is a very vicious cycle, very vicious cycle. So, if those factors keep increasing, you're telling me you're going to keep increasing valuations too?
It's one of the driving factors. Yes, it is. It absolutely is. When you capitalize an income stream to value, then, then that's the, that's the end result, is that when your income goes up, your value goes up.
That's a sledgehammer that's hammering taxpayers across our city and our community because there's so many factors that they cannot control and you're telling me because of those uncontrollable factors, we're just going to add more fuel to the fire and increase valuations even more so, which it's a vicious cycle because it never stops.
Well, you're only looking at one side of the equation.
Where does it stop would be my question.
You're only looking at one side of the equation.
I'm not.
Let her, let her finish.
When you have...
I know, I know, but you, she made a comment.
Excuse me, Mayor, but I'm not finished.
Well, we'll come back to you. We're not going to turn you off, but you made some comments that I think she wants to clarify because I will say that that is just one method and it's not the most dependable method even for...
And it's, it's actually a very reliable method. And one of the things that, when you talk about increasing rents, we don't just ask for the rents, we ask for the expenses. So, if they're dealing with higher expenses due to inflation on the cost of higher HVAC units and higher roofs and higher turnover costs, that's also reflected. And so, if they have an increase in rent and they have an increase in expenses, their overall net income is probably not changing, in which case, they're not going to see a whole lot of value change. But if their rents have gone up, but their expenses that they've reported to us are not indicative of a major increase on the expense side and it shows a larger net income, then yes, their chances are, are going to see an increase in valuation. We look at both sides of that equation, both the, the income coming in and the income going out to arrive at a net value, a net income. It's that net income that's used to actually do the calculations of calculate, of capitalizing to an income stream.
Well, let me go back to what I said. In this environment that we're in, you know and I know that the cost of living has increased.
True.
Okay? And I don't see, it hadn't gone down yet, okay? But you got to be careful when you make comments like that because rates are going up and property owners are charging higher rates and their valuations are going up too. That is a very vicious cycle. And I don't see them coming down and I don't see the inflationary cost or the cost of living or the cost to do business going down either. I see it going up. So, I don't see where those adjustments would be. I just see the cycle getting more vicious because it doesn't stop. It just keeps going, which ultimately, we're dealing now with affordable housing. That's what is a major obstacle to affordable housing because they can't make the adjustments needed to stay in business and to be able to provide these housing for people because the rents keep going up because of the cost of living, power bills, electric bills, gas bills across the board, just the bare necessities, materials to maintain and to keep those properties where they need to be, all those things, landscaping, every, you just pick, pick, pick a cost, it's all going up.
And those would all be reflected in the expenses.
In, in theory, you're, what I heard you say earlier to the gentleman was if your rates are going up, then your valuation's going up, meaning that you're going to get taxed higher. That, that, that really concerns me.
If you, if you can't balance that with increased expenses, then yes, if you're showing a higher net income where you're not balancing that with expenses, and don't forget, most tenants are the ones that are bearing the burden for the, for all of the utilities and for the lawn maintenance and all of that on these properties, that's not being borne by the, the property owner. The other issue that we have is we have what's called a 299(c) freeze where they appeal their property, they get a lock on their property for three years. During that three years, we are not allowed to make any adjustments for market. So, if there is any adjustment for market, when that freeze comes off, they get hit with a three-year adjustment. And it does make it seem like a sizable increase instead of, instead of being stepped up as market is dictating. They're getting hit for any increases to the market that have occurred. And when you were dealing with coming out of the, the hyperinflation that we were seeing of 22 and 23, some of those increases were pretty significant. And some of those folks were locked in, in 22, didn't see those increases in 23 or 24, but now they're coming off their locks for 25. And so, now, they're seeing what everybody else saw in 23 and 24. They're, they're now seeing it this year.
Well, I, I think you understand my concern and as long as you're being fair across the board with everybody and that, you know, there is be some method to the, some methodology that we're talking about and mixed with the fairness across the board, but, you know, you got to be real careful with some of those, I guess, analogies to supporting increased valuations.
Fair enough. The only thing that I would add, Mr. Mayor, is residential business owners, well, business owners that rent residential properties, that's one of the only local exemptions that we have here in Columbus that do not pay an occupation tax. So, I just wanted to put that out there too, whereas every other business owner in Columbus do pay occupation tax. Folks that rent residential properties as a business do not.
All right, Counselor Anchor?
Oh, yes. So, if you own residential property and you are renting those properties as a business, you do not pay occupation taxes. That is one of the only local exemptions that we in Columbus have in place here. And I, and I assume back from 1995 or 1997, when this was put in place, it was to help those renters so that in the event there is, you know, a change in the market or whatever as far as the rents are concerned, one of the expenses that the business owner would not have would be paying occupation taxes to the city.
Mr. Anchor?
Ms. Chief Assessor, I appreciate the job that you have to do and I know it's really hard. I've spent time together with you and, you know, I've said how smart you are and how, how much detail in the lobby, in the state legislation that there is. You talked about a taxpayer that, that comes often, you alluded to it, and I've heard you say it before, but do you think taxpayers are honest? Do they want to pay their taxes? This is almost a rhetorical question, but I will ask this question. Do you abide by a motto that all taxpayers are liars?
Wait, wait, wait.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no. You're asking one of our employees if they think the taxpayers are liars?
No, I'm asking if she has said that, if she said it.
This is a hearing for the Taxpayer Bill of Rights.
I wanna, I wanna talk about.
I would like to keep it.
I'll move on, I'll move on. The chicken or the egg? The chicken or the egg? You know, we don't tax something that's not built by somebody who puts their money and they're on the line, number one. Number two, I wanted to add what, to what Counselor Glenn said about our renters. Cause this is affecting our population and we do have an issue with trying to help people along in, in the rents. And we talked about rents multiple years with the millage rate with our tax. And so I, I, I am just kind of sharing a little bit since we're not going to answer these questions. But our budget is moving up. This has to do with chicken and the egg. And our budget has bumped up another $28 million and our property tax is the major part of that. And so I think it's okay to talk about chicken and egg if we're going to talk about it here. I just want to say to the taxpayer, thank you for coming as a property owner and having the courage to stand. Because you're not just standing for the taxpayer, you're standing for the renters and everybody in our city. And I think that's very vital and important. And I would like to add to the legislative agenda for our state in October that we would take it to the state and talk about the cap rates and the income approaches, one of those three. Because I've had my own experiences. It's part of the reason that I wanted to serve on the board. It's part of the reason I'm here today. If you're going to incent economy and grow business, you have to have fair, I've heard you teach me, fair market, mass appraisals across the board, consistent, consistent. And I guess I'll rest at that.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Suzanne, I would like, Ms. Tax Assessor, I would like for you to provide for me three things from Mr. Hilton's properties. I want the highest, the highest property that was assessed. I want the lowest property that was assessed and the amount and the, the base that you increased those on. And I want the mid-level. And I understand today, Mayor, that we're having an executive session and I would like to invite, Ms. Wyden House and either your Chair of the Board of Tax Assessors or the Vice Chair, I want them to be with you. We're going to have that at 11 o'clock.
I, I will reach out. I, I don't know if they're available, but I will reach out to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Counselor Chambers.
Yes, quick question. What, what is the percentage of, renters in Columbus, Georgia?
We have, I don't know the exact percentage. We have 66,000 single-family residential properties. Less than 50% are homesteaded. So, and then we have multifamily units as well. So I would say that, that the majority of our residents are tenants of, of some form. Or, or they're, or they're owners that don't qualify for our homestead. As an example, military members that may have their home of record somewhere else, but they buy a house outside the base gates of every place they live. You know, that, that kind of thing. But for the most part, I would say the majority, and we've seen that trending the last few years where the number of owner-occupied, homesteaded properties is decreasing year over year. It's getting, it's getting smaller and smaller. It's, it's during the, the 21, 20 timeframe, we saw a lot of properties being snapped up by investors that were beating the first-time homebuyers out of the market.
So it's pretty much safe to say that over, over 50%, maybe 60, 65 are renters?
Probably something close to that.
And is also safe to say that our eviction rates have increased?
I, I don't know about eviction rates. I, I try and stay in my lane.
Right. And the reason behind that is because tenants are not able to pay their rent. And a lot of that is because they can't afford it from an economical perspective. Because rents have increased. So my challenge to you is if you could go back and figure out a plan, because we want to make sure that everybody have a good quality of life and be able to afford their rents and food on the table and thing, and other necessities. But I would propose that if you or your team could go back and bring us some options so we can figure out how to help out the investors. Because the investors are the ones that own the apartments, the rental properties. When property taxes go up, the tenants, they bear the burden. It's just what it is. I'm in real estate, so I know. So we, we really need to do something about that. Because like I said, we want to make sure that people can afford their rent and be able to have necessities to have a good quality of life. So I challenge you and your team to bring us back something where we can figure out how to help our, help our renters.
Yeah. So what I do is established by the state of Georgia and how I do it is established by the state of Georgia. I don't have a whole lot of leeway in changing methodologies. Those are established by the state. The state is the one who tells us exactly how we're going to value properties. And they set the parameters by which we do this and the standards that we have to meet. And we don't have a whole lot of flexibility in that. And so when I run our ratio studies every single year, that we are audited on by the Department of Audits that comes in and says, yes, you are meeting standards. Yes, you are doing this appropriately. And I get audited once a year by the Department of Audits and I get audited once every three years by the Department of Revenue. And they're the ones who say, you will do it this way or you will, you know, or you're not doing it correctly. And these are the penalties for not doing it the way that's established. I think that we need to look, if we're looking for affordable housing solutions, and, and this is stepping outside of my lane, I think we need to look towards, um, towards some of our community reinvestment programs and things of that nature. We already have low-income housing tax credit properties located within Muskogee County. They are, they have their own methodologies for valuation is dictated by the state legislature. We have, um, we have properties that, that are under pilot programs, payment in lieu of taxes with the Housing Authority and, and those kind of things. So there, there are programs in place in the city that are, that are trying to address the issue of low-income housing or, or some of the housing challenges, affordable housing challenges. But the assessor's offices, our job is to actually value property. It's, it's, you know, we, we have to do it in a way that is uniform and, and unbiased. And we have to, we have to base it off of what that property would sell for out on the open market. Whether it's picked up by an investor who's from here or not from here, who doesn't know the market and is willing to pay more than any of us here would think to pay for it. But that drives the market or whether it's, it's an individual who's looking to buy it to be their, to be their residence. I, I can't allow those things to influence how we value property.
So quick, quick question for you. So what's the purpose of the appeal process?
The purpose of the appeal process is to challenge, to challenge your, your value. The, the thing you have to remember about mass appraisal is we do mass appraisal from the outside of a property. We don't get to go inside a house. We're not fee appraisers. We don't go inside a house. We also don't pick, you know, handpick three or four residences to say, okay, this is what we're going to compare this to. Mass appraisal is, is done from the exterior of the property. We, we work on a statistic basis where we are looking at what properties are selling for, what cost tables are, what, what cap rates are, what income levels are, what expense levels are. We're looking at, at all of that. When it comes to like market properties as an example, we look at, is it owner-financed? Are there seller concessions? Was it, was it a cash transaction? Those kind of things. What kind of expenses were associated with the sale of the property? When, um, when we're looking at unique properties, sorry, that we don't have comparable properties or we don't have income information for, then we're looking at stuff from a cost basis. And we're saying, okay, what's the, what is the depreciation on this property? When was this property built? What are the cost tables? What are the, what's the utility on this? Is this a property that was built in the 1970s that, that we look at and say, oh, well, this really isn't how we do this anymore? So maybe it has some functional loss or some economic loss. Maybe when it was built, it was on a nice quiet street and now it's on a four-lane highway. And we have an economic loss that, that cannot be addressed. So we have to measure those things. And so when we go into the appeal process or the income method, you know, we can say, okay, well, you know, maybe we're looking at, at market rates and, and you have something specific about your property that, um, that is not indicative of market. So we do this as a whole. And then when the appeal process comes time, people have the right to challenge that valuation and to provide us with additional information that maybe we didn't have. To say, hey, you know, you couldn't see it from the outside, but I have a leaky roof or I have this deferred maintenance or I have this functionality that's awkward and doesn't work and it makes it hard to sell my property or it reduces the value of my property. And that's the, that's the purpose of the appeal process. And then they get to take that on if they don't like what we come up with at that point. They get to take that on to the Board of Equalization and the Board of Equalization can establish a value. And if they don't like that, they can take that on to Superior Court.
So the appeal process is put in place because there is an opportunity for error?
Absolutely, absolutely. And nobody has ever said that we are perfect.
Right.
And we are more than happy to look at any property that, that somebody appeals or that somebody, somebody calls us up. I'll give you a really good example. This morning, we had a taxpayer who called and she said, I don't know what to do. It turns out she had a fire on Christmas in her, in her property that we didn't see on the fire report that we had gotten. We're headed out there right now to correct that. It affected three units at her apartment complex. But we didn't have that information. We somehow, it didn't make it to us. We missed it and we're out there fixing it right now.
But my, you know, the, the gentleman that came up that stated he sold or have 1,300 properties, I just think that is, I mean, to come and try to appeal 1,300 properties or a couple of hundred properties, I think that's, I mean, we got to find a better way.
They, they do a third, a third, a third. Um, most of our big investors appeal one-third of their properties every single year. And it's, it's just part of the, it's part of the appeal process and, and we go through this every, every year. And he's not the only one. We have some other big companies and they, they literally do. They, they appeal one-third of their properties every single year. We have some big, um, um, commercial, uh, office owners that do the same thing. You know, or not office owners, but commercial businesses, some of the chains and stuff. They'll, they'll come in, they'll appeal a third every year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You know, and I, I think, I think it highlights a problem that goes way beyond the assessment process. The assessment process, whether you like it or not, is, is there to try to just read the tea leaves about where we are. And if we don't do it, if we artificially deflate that, then we're in trouble with state. So there may be a way to move forward with, uh, through the state legislature to try to allow us to cap certain appreciation rates on real property each year. Now, we have to do the math and see how that's going to impact the total, total budget. But, uh, and, and there, there's so many issues with affordable housing right now. The, the out-of-town investors that come in and buy at any rate and then they just jack up the rates, which tends to have an impact on the others. It's a huge, huge challenge. And I know the state's been working on it. I think we ought to put together a task force here, put some real estate agents on there, some of the members of council on there, some attorneys, get our tax assessor and start trying to peel back the onion and feel, find what the center of the issue is. Because part of it is creating better-paying jobs. Frankly, the, the, things are getting more expensive. Counselor Davis mentioned that, as did Counselor Anker. And, um, without addressing that piece of it too, we're kind of whistling past the graveyard, so. Yes, ma'am. State your name, please, and your address. Uh, yeah, hang on, there should be one. Here we go. You're not on there yet. Well, we gotta get you. There we go. Hang on.
Okay, I think the light's on now.
We got three and it's not labeled.
My name is Kathy Tanner. I've lived in Columbus, Georgia all my life and I really am not here for an appeal. It's just more of a question and I may have missed it because I was a little late. So I got my, you know, assessment letter for this year. My house is worth the exact same amount of money as it was last year. But my millage rate last year was .01540 and my millage rate this year is 02375, which has increased my taxes by $500. Now, some people might think that's not a lot of money, but my question is, why did, did we do a SPOLOST that increased the millage rate for, I don't know why I'm up on my millage rate?
Okay, so the millage rate that you read off that's this year's millage rate, that you're reading as being this year's millage rate? If you look at last year's notice of assessment, you'll actually see county, which is the 1-5, the school, which is the 2-3. So what you just read off was the 2-3. That was just the school portion. So the millage rate has not changed from notice of assessment to notice of assessment. They're the exact same.
Even though my taxes, estimated taxes went up?
No. So your, your estimated taxes should, if your value has not changed, your estimated taxes should be the exact same as was on your last notice of assessment.
Okay.
Okay. Cause, cause, cause what you're trying to do is you're trying to compare the, the county, the city-county versus the school millage rate.
So I just need to look back at my last one?
Yes, ma'am. And if you'd like, you can always step over to our office. We'll be happy to look it up for you.
Okay, I have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crabbe.
I just want to reiterate something that was said. We have about 66,000 single-family residences and less than 50% are homesteaded. The freeze is not the problem.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
Thanks, ma'am. I just want to make an observation here in this light of this conversation. The way you deal with higher valuations, increased assessments, the counter to that is lowering the millage. That's what you do. You lower the millage, evaluations and assessments continue to go up. That's the balance of the equation. Now, the one thing, the one factor that we never talk about, but if we're going to get serious in the future about having a task force or about dealing with some of the societal issues that we have that are confronting people, affordable housing, all the way down the line, you're going to have to talk about tax abatement. You hear me talk about that all the time. I'm not, I, I, I mean, I think in certain situations, if there's value being put on the table, for example, 500, a thousand jobs a month and you equate that as value, then tax abatement might be the right way to do such a deal. But if you're not getting any value and you're just kind of unthoughtfully going through a process that you're just allowing that to happen in your community. We've got areas of revitalization and areas in our community that we've got a tool, we got a bag of tools that we can use for economic development. And that's okay. We're, I'm not talking about that. But I would submit here today that there's probably tens of millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars in tax abatement over the years that's happened. That we, as a city, we don't get the benefit of using for the operations. So when you look at that equation, if you had that money, you could lower the millage. When you look at that, we're going to have to get serious about that and how. When you look at that, we're going to have to get serious about that and how we use these economic development incentives. And I, I talk about it all the time, but it's reality. We have to be very careful with that because that's the operating funds of the city that ultimately, if you had that revenue that you could utilize, you could lower the millage rate, and then some of these things might not be a factor. That's how you make the adjustments. That's how you balance it. That's how you have a functioning equation to the taxes in Muskogee County.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. State your name, please.
Yes, my name is Rachel Cummings. I own rental property here. I've had a little over 100 right now. I got sold 50,000, trying to get out of it. Nobody wants to buy mine. Rental property has done changes a lot the last 40 years. I've had them over 14 years. Some of my renters have had 40. I go to appeals every year if I see them. Every year, they ask me what my rent is, and I have come from a lot of my rents last five years. I ain't going up for it. So a lot of my $500 houses are still 500. So when I go to my field, they say, no, you should be charging 800. Well, if you go up to 800, you're those people I go to. 80% of mine are low-income. 80% of mine only have a car. A lot of my houses only have drive-throughs. I got Anderson Village, North Island, Gensetta. They only have drive-throughs. These people can't afford more than the Viper. A lot of people don't get about $800 a week. $800, $900 a month.
All right, that better? Did y'all miss me? Did I say something wrong?
No, we got it.
Did you hear what I said? Okay. All right. So, I mean, every time I go, they say, what's your rent? Let's go based on your rent. So I'll say my rent's $550. And so, well, you should be charging 850. That's just cause one guy went over here in Anderson Village, and he bought a lot of these houses, and he's charging $800 a month. Well, he went in completely redone them, and he's got young people in them now. Mine have old people in them, and the old people can't pay that. So you have to look at, they're bringing in 850, 900 a month income on social security. 500's still a lot, but it's all they can pay. But with the taxes going up, we do have to add that into our fees and go up. And y'all say y'all take into effect repairs. I've never seen y'all do that. I've gone to the board down there and they ask me what I charge rent, and I tell them. And we base it off of that. But then I've never seen repairs come into it. And then I've gone against the board down there and come out here and seen you to go to court. But you tell me when I've come out here, this is what it is. We can't change it. And I know you all only have a certain percentage y'all are allowed to change it. Well, a lot of times, that ain't enough.
That's, that's not true about a percentage.
Okay.
That's not true about a percentage.
Well, when I'm downtown and I'm telling them, and we argue the fact of what my rent and my income is, and I tell them, I'll bring my tax papers. They never ask, but I'll bring them anytime they want to and show what I turn in.
Let him finish.
And I'll show what I turn in for repairs, and I'll show what I turn in for the rent. And that's kind of what they should look at, but they don't.
I can't answer to what the BOE will look at and won't look at.
Well, it's your guy with the long hair with the ponytail that comes in and does most of the dealing with.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I understand, you know, my guy's going to be down there, he's going to be defending our values. But what the Board of Equalization is willing to look at or not look at, I'm in the same boat you are, in that they don't always consider everything that we want to present either.
Right.
So that's a, that's a situation where they're independent of us. They're, they're picked by the grand jury. That's, they're not picked by you, they're not picked by me.
Right.
But as, as far as willing to consider expenses, we will consider expenses. If we've got, you know, a, a good expense data provided, we ask for rent rolls, we ask for expense statements. And, you know, it's, it's, if you provide those to us, we do consider those at the time that, that you file your original appeal. Once it gets down to the Board of Equalization, then, you know, it's, it's going to be dependent on what they're willing to consider. We do consider that stuff, and we will consider it if you provide it.
Well, I know a lot of times down there, they say, we can go this amount, but we can't go no further without it going higher up. So they, it's like they do have a percentage. They can go, but that's it.
So the, the Board of Equalization knows that the Board of Assessors is not allowed to appeal unless we get council permission if the change is less than 20%. So they like to keep it under that 20% change. That's why they won't.
They fly under the border, yes.
They're the ones applying the percentage, not us.
Okay. Because see, like, I got a lot of houses, you went from 40,000, and these are, uh, this is right next to Columbus Tech, 40,000, now this year it's 107. I mean, they have tripled. Shouldn't we have an amount that should go up every year? Like, you say we'll peel it, it's froze for three years.
Yeah.
So in three years, we don't want to see our property triple in three years unless we're selling it. We want to see it go up, say, 10%, 15%.
So the, the state of Georgia does not cap that? This, like, as an example, the state of Florida caps how much assessors officer allowed to increase on an annual basis. The state of Georgia does not. We're, we're driven by what the market does. And if you've been frozen since 2023, as an example, and that's coming off now, 23, 24? No, 22. You've been frozen since 22. So you're, you're looking at the increases from 23, 24, and on into 25, all hitting you at once. What was the biggest year that we had increases? It was 2022. When you were already frozen for 22, that was the year. From 22 to 23 is when we had the largest, uh, the largest increase that we had.
I thought it was a little bit before that, because I know that year I peeled 98. So I mean, I'll peel.
So, yeah, we had increases from 20 to 21. We had increases from 21 to 22, and then we had increases from 22 to 23. And some of it just trickles in. And then, starting in 23, heading into 24, we started to see the market slow down as far as the number of sales. We started to see value sort of stabilize. We weren't seeing these massive bidding wars any longer. And we started to see a little more seller concession in, in the, in the sales market. So we are seeing things sort of stabilize. And we've been watching it very closely because I've been waiting for a downturn and waiting to see if I need to start lowering values. And we do have a couple of neighborhoods that we lowered values this year because we saw those neighborhoods start to dip.
Well, see, when you try to sell, I know it matters what you're renting for. Like, I've sold 50 in the last four years, and those 50 I sold, ain't a single one of the people I had in them still there.
Yeah.
Because they've all bought from out-of-town California and put the people out.
Yep.
So that's people that's got to go find low-income houses.
Yep.
And I mean, right now, I got a couple I want to sell, and they say, your rent ain't high enough. They said, take your rent from 5 to 750 and hit a sale. But then I got to go put those people out to do that.
Yep.
Mr. Cummings, thank you.
Huh?
I agree with you, and I think what you talked about, a cap, is something that we, again, we need to talk with our legislature about.
Yes, we do. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Tax Assessor.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
My name is Claremont Barnes, Jr. I live at 5935 AT&amp;T Road, Springfield, Virginia. I am a homeowner. I do own property here in Georgia, as well as Florida and Virginia. So I, I also am a business person, and I understand both sides of both the homeownership, and I reap the benefits for the home that I live in, and I also receive benefits for being a business owner. And I appreciate the public service that you do, ma'am. And, and public servants, I, I feel as though do not always receive the, uh, the understanding that they should, especially from some elected officials. Because we all should be public servants. But I appreciate the methodology that you use. I do think that this issue is something that the Georgia Legislature needs to take up. Uh, I, I think at, at this level, it may not be something that can be, be handled. But a few things. One, you mentioned affordable homeownership, and I think we do want to get to the homeownership, not only for, uh, for, for those are able to actually own a home, part of the American dream. It isn't, I want to rent a home, it's, I want to own a home. And providing the homestead exemption for those to own a home is where everyone up here should be looking to put, everyone in Columbus. Because when you own a home, you will live there, you will take care of it, you will pay taxes. Yes, rents are higher. I have renters, as I increase the rent, they leave and they go purchase a home. I'm glad. I'm glad that they're able to afford a home. So if there are things that the elected officials up here are able to do to increase homeownership, I'm all for it. Nothing against businesses. As I said, I have businesses. I'm, I used to be a licensed Realtor for Coldwell Banker. I've done a number of things, so I, I do understand. But I don't think that this is the place to grandstand and, and try to beat up on public service that are doing their job, that are following the law. If you want to change things, change it in your legislature. That's what you're here for. You should be working towards homeownership for individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Mayor Protem Allen?
Thank you, thank you, mayor. Well said, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Tax Assessor, can you help me understand when, when a resident, I want to ask two, two questions here, a residence and a rental property. What's the size of the comparable area that you use for that home?
We try and stay to within the subdivision that they're located in, if we can. If we can't, we're going to look at neighboring subdivisions if they're similar. We try not to go beyond a half mile at the most. I know some fee appraisers will go a mile as their, as their general rule. Our neighborhoods are tighter than that, and, and generally, when, when we're looking at, at neighborhoods, and we do things on a, on a, what we call a neighborhood level, which is a geographic area, and with mass appraisal, we're not necessarily picking this comp or that comp or this comp or that comp to say, hey, these are the comparisons. We're saying, okay, this is a 1970s break rancher, it's an average build for its time period, its condition is rated as, um, fair, so it's a 90-grade condition, it has, you know, this number of bathrooms, this number of, um, of bedrooms, that kind of stuff. It has a fireplace, it has an attached garage, those kind of things. It's X square feet, and it's all, every one of those is given a factor. And so we, we look, those factors are developed by the sales. So it's, um, it's not as simple as just saying, hey, I have this house over here in Anderson Village, as an example, that was brought up earlier as a, as a rental. And, you know, it was built in 19, you know, 60 or whatever, and I have these sales in Anderson Village that were also built in 1960, and there's three of them, but that's not enough sales, so let me go over here and grab two more. It's not how this works. Because this is mass appraisal. So we establish the tables, and the tables actually work for the entire county, but then neighborhoods are graded themselves. And so they have, subdivisions have their own factors applied to them that say, okay, we've got this one set of cost tables that's used to, to develop the, the price of a house, and, um, that cost table will work whether it's in Green Island Hills or whether it's in Anderson Village. It's based on those neighborhood factors that get applied to it, the, the grade of the construction, the quality of the construction, the, the features that are within the property, what kind of HVAC, what kind of roof, what kind of foundation. All of those things, they all have a factor assigned to them, and it's, it's all about the math. But that's, but that's how that's done.
What about the age of the property?
The age of the property has a definite, definite effect on, on the valuation because the age is also a factor. Now, if you have, as an example, a 100-year-old house, when the average lifespan of a house is 27 and a half years, according to the IRS, about 50, according to a builder, and you have a 100-year-old house, you know that house has exceeded its lifespan. It should be worth zero, right? It's all depreciated out. But it's not because it's had maintenance done on it and all of that. So that's when we get into what's called effective age, where we say, okay, it's had all of these systems done on it. It has a new roof, it has new windows, it has, you know, this, that, or the, or the next thing, that maybe, we, we say they're new. They're new versus when the house was built. Maybe the windows were done in the 70s, but that's a far cry from when it was built in the 1800s. So it has, and every time they do something like that, every time you, you extend the life of your property by maintaining it, you can change that effective age. And that's just another factor. It's given a numerical value, and that's what's used to calculate the overall value, is all of those values together.
So the rental property and the homeowner property is, the comparables are basically the same?
We use the exact same. Where you find the biggest difference between a home, uh, you know, homeowner property and a rental property is in condition. That's, that's going to be your biggest driver there from a, from a market standpoint, is the condition. Because homeowners are invested in the largest purchase of their lives, and they tend to, you know, to do the maintenance and all of that, whereas a, a tenant, you know, they're there for a year, and any one of our investors in the audience will tell you that there's turnover costs associated every time a, a tenant moves out. And they're, they're not always the kindest because they, they know they don't have to fix it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you for addressing the homestead questions I had last week. Sometimes people don't know exactly, just like Ms. Tanner just asked a question about her property taxes going up, and she found out that Governor Kemp gave a tax, I think, was it a tax break last year or was something?
Two, two years ago, Governor Kemp gave, gave the, the Homestead Relief Grant. And so that's sort of catching up at this point because it's, it's no longer there.
Right. So one, and I appreciate my fellow colleague asking that question about breaking down the high, the mid, the low for those properties. And that's what my question was, that Charmaine, Counselor Crabbe was like, I don't know what Toy is talking about. But showing an example of the high, the low in those non-homestead exemptions, and then also in the exemptions, because people feel like individuals that live in Green Island Hills are only paying $50, when I know for a fact that some are paying $6,000 or more for property taxes on an annual basis. But also, really drilling down that the school board millage is 23.075, right? Drilling down what a urban service district is, 1, 5, 6, and 7, because people are thinking you're talking about districts 1, 5, 6, and 6, and 7, like council districts. Actually explaining that, because people don't know. And, and what they're doing is asking council. And because I'm so active on social media, they're asking me. And I'm putting this information out there, so when I ask, yes, some of them might not be in this audience right now, but they're watching online, and they're asking these questions. And they want to know, why is it different in these council districts? But it's actually service districts, and that's not explained. And explaining why we have 20, 23.07 on the school board, but here in bid 5, we got 6.99, bid 6, 5.760, 760, bid 7, 4.470, urban service districts 1, 5, 6, and 7, 15.240, urban service district 1, 15.24. And then when you say urban service district 2 is rural at 9.260, what does that mean? Why, why is urban service district 2 less than urban service district 1? So a little further explanation, because you have all these people here that don't understand it. If I didn't take this class right here, and my professor didn't break it down to me, I wouldn't understand. But I understand it because, one, when you're speaking in reference to ACCG and we're getting all this knowledge, we got to give it to our citizens. But if we're not going to ACCG, and you only got one person that's really in the classroom, and then you have subject matter experts like Counselor Crabbe and Counselor Chambers, and then one who just got off the Tax Assessors Board, which is Counselor Anker, who went through that training, if we're not going, we don't know, and we can't share that information with the citizens, with our constituents. So it's important, because it's confusing when we put a press release out and say that the taxes are going up, or the millage rate, or whatever is, that's supposed to be the language in that press release. It goes out all the time, but we can put a little explanation behind it of what that really means, but we don't. We can go above and beyond. We can do something a little additional to help our residents know, because it just becomes a lot of confusion and a lot of noise and a lot of frustration. And I, I understand the frustration in reference to that. But I will say this, I did hear cap multiple times at ACCG, and I'm sure cap multiple times at ACCG, and I'm sure at GMA, we have talked about a 12% cap over the last four years, trying to push that. I will beg that my counselors come to the ACCG's annual legislative meeting that discuss things that we want to put on the legislative agenda, because it's dual purpose. You can speak at ACCG, and you have all 159 counties going with you, or you can send something up and you've just got one county. We need all 159 counties to understand what the plight is with our residents. So, it has been conversations the last four years, I've been in reference to 12%, cap in a three-year timeframe, and you cannot go over that 12% cap. And it's every year, it's every year, and I'm sure you probably hear it when you're traveling the state.
You and I must be going to different ones, but I go to the policy, the ACCG Policy Committee meetings.
I'm on Policy Council.
You know, I go to those as well, because they ask to have some tax assessors there, and I'm on the Policy Committee for the GAO. And yes, it's been, you know, discussed and all of that. I don't recall that it ever actually made the policy statement that went to the legislature.
It never does.
Yeah, and we have a lot of stuff that doesn't make our policy statements as well that we would love to have. You know, one of them was the Homestead Appeal, though, that did make it finally, and that actually made it through legislature. So, it's a matter of keeping, keep trying.
Right.
And it's, you know, the GAO is right there with the ACCG in trying to ease confusion with the taxpayers and to try and make the methodologies easier to comprehend, easier for us to accomplish. It's, you know, we get that this is, you know, what we do is not popular. Nobody likes the Tax Assessor's Office. I always kind of joke around that we're the most hated people in the city, because nobody likes to see us coming. They're all worried we're going to jack their values, and that's not the case. We're not looking to jack anybody's value. We're looking to make sure that we have the right information, that we have the property graded correctly. We want to be as accurate and as fair as possible, but we also don't have anything to do with the mileage rates. That's a misconception with tax being in our name, that we have anything to do with the mileage rates, because we don't. The mileage rate information that's on my notices of assessment that are sent out annually comes from the Tax Commissioner's Office, and those mileage rates are set by you all. We don't have anything to do in the Tax Assessor's Office with the setting of the mileage rates. As far as explaining what the bids are and what the tax allocation districts are, the TADS, everything falls into one of two service districts here in Muskogee County. Actually, there's three. There was one property in District 4, which is on Fort Benning, which is going to be going away, because the federal government's taking it back, so that's probably going to go away. Then it'll be down to just the two urban service districts, District 1 and District 2. 5, 6, and 7 are all in Urban Service District 1, but they have additional mileage rates on top of them. Those are the tax allocation districts for business development. Same thing with the bids. That's what those additional mileage rates are, and when people say, well, I see this bid district has this 4 point, they still have that District 1 mileage rate up underneath them, that's on top of that.
So, it's additional?
Yes, ma'am.
The bid, then you have the urban service district?
You have the urban service district 1.
And you have the school district.
And the school district, and then you have the tax allocation districts on top of that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
The bids, yeah.
Business Improvement District.
Yep.
It sounds like it would be a good topic for us to have a work session and be able to talk through some of these things. This is, remember, this is a taxpayer bill of rights hearing, and we have some folks that want to be heard. Counselor Anchor, I'm going to let him go, and then I'll come back to you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Claremont Barnes, 5935 AT&amp;T Road. Thank you again for this time, and thank you, ma'am, again, for explaining some of the details to the counselors. I know being on council is a part-time job, but it is a full-time responsibility. Some of the questions that you're asking on council, you shouldn't need to ask them, because you should have the answers. When your constituents come to you, you should know these answers.
Mr. Barnes.
You set.
Mr. Barnes.
You set the council, yes.
I understand what you're saying. This is a taxpayer bill of rights.
Okay, I will continue with the taxing, yes.
Okay, thank you.
In regards to the mileage rates and such, I would say that, that yes, they are set, and I agree with my public servant there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Anchor?
Yeah, just for clarification, Mayor Pro Tem, on the legislative agenda, I saw two things. I want to make sure we were looking, when we go forward for the record, could we look at the income approach or the cap rate? Talk about that, and if we're doing a work session before October. And the second thing is, you know, what Counselor Tucker was talking about, 12% a year max, I mean, something's got to change there, and I think that's the second item, is we've got to look at the, if we only review the properties every three years like this, and I think that the numbers I heard, the gentleman with the Anderson Village, his property tax in three years went up 67%. His rent did not change. Had his rent changed, it had only gone up, it would only have gone up 12% if I did that math right per year. So, it's not a balanced equation, and I think we've got to put that on the legislative agenda in addition to the income cap rate approach.
Okay, yeah, they are recording the requests for the legislative agenda, so anytime we make a suggestion, they have that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. My name is Marvin Broadwater Senior, and as I walked in here, I was not going to make one comment until Counselor Tucker spoke. And I've attended every last taxpayer public hearing, the first one at 9:00 AM, the one at 5:30, and then the one again today. And what she said was that caused me to rise, was that she said that the public does not know. And I've said this three or four times to you all. Well, the reason they don't know, because y'all don't talk to them. Let's be fair, transparent, honest, upfront. Public forums just can't happen at 9:00 AM. It can't happen just at 5:30 during the week. This is the most that you've had in all three of them. Why is that? Everybody can't be here during the week, and I've said you need to have one on a Saturday. That's why they don't know. That's why, that's why the citizens come in here complaining. They want to know, you got to have it at a time where that's available for them, on a Saturday. Madam Tax Assessor, I'm going to issue you a public apology. Wrong is wrong.
Mr. Broadwater, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we understand that I was coming into Counselor Tucker's point about the public does not know, Mr. Mayor, and the reason that they don't know is because we have all of our meetings at a time when the public can't come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Glover Gossett. I live at 4918 West Stereo Lane. Thank you for letting me come and ask this question. I went to the public hearing last night, the first one for the school board's tax levy, and I understand that the boards, both the City Council Board and the school board, are the ones who set the mileage rate, but y'all don't know what that is until you are briefed by the tax assessors to tell you what this was the previous years. And so, my question is, about two years ago, in June, June 20th of 2023, the tax assessor admitted to using data that was about one to three years old, and that goes against Georgia law. What assurances do we taxpayers have that the office is using current market data, and where can we see and verify that when we get our things? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, the state law allows us to use, when we talk about market data that's, you know, old, we have to use the previous year's data. We can go back up to three years, allowed by law. It's not a violation of the law, particularly when you're dealing with unique properties that are harder to find data for. Some of our plant sites, as an example, you don't have a lot of sales information for them, that kind of thing. So, we are allowed to extend that timeframe. It has to be adjusted for time, but we do use, up to two years' worth of sales is common within our industry. We are audited every single year by the Georgia Department of Audits, and we provide them with all of our sales information, all of our data. They get full copies of all of it, and once every three years, the Department of Revenue comes in, and they go through our office, and they do a full audit on us as well. Our data is readily available out there to the general public. I didn't bring any of the cards with us. I have cards that have our websites. We have multiple websites that have all of the data. It's all searchable. That's a free option. You can also purchase our data. We'll provide you with the flat files of all of the data for the entire county, and there is a fee for that if you want to purchase it, but if you use our Q Public site, it's got great search tools, and you can download it, and that's a free option. So, it is available to the general public.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, and I appear to be out of questions.
Give me your name, sir.
Jeremy Hilton, 31820. Just a couple of things, been listening today. From a big-picture standpoint, it seems like to me the biggest issue in this city is the mileage rate, the high mileage rate we have, and then also the property tax freeze. Those two things right there, I would say, are driving a lot of these concerns out here. And then also, one thing somebody else mentioned, I think council, y'all have talked about too, is the capping the annual increase that I think the state of Florida does, which state of Georgia does not. If we were able to somehow work that in somewhere down the road, a lot of us probably wouldn't be here to talk about this. And then narrowing down to a real-life example, one property of mine, I'm a landlord, I got my notice in the mail, and the increase is 167%. The property tax on that will be $2,175. That property rents for $900. So, you do the math on that, that's about two and a half times what the rent is, two and a half months' worth of rent is going straight to property tax. And then you can go ahead and say insurance on that's about $900. So, about three and a half months' worth of rent is going to property tax and insurance. You can't make it in this business, doing this. And who gets the brunt of it is sometimes the tenants, and I think one of y'all mentioned, over 50% of our city rents property, or less than 50% own property. And as a landlord, we don't feel right, and I think Mr. Cummings mentioned it, of going up on our rental rates. At best, we might go up 5%. And sometimes, we feel guilty doing that. So, you do the math on that, $900 in rent, go up 5%, what's that, $45? We feel guilty even doing that to a lot of our tenants. So, you know, with inflation, price of material, property insurance, property taxes going up, us as a landlord, you can't make money in this business hardly anymore. So, who's going to take on the risk of buying property and renting it out to people who unfortunately aren't able to buy a home at the time? I mean, it's a risk involved in this. And so, you know, if this specific property I just mentioned went up 5%, 10% a year, you wouldn't hear from anybody out there in this city, because I've talked to a lot of property owners out there, say, hey, what are y'all's values going up? 100%, 200%, 150%, whatever. But if they're just going up 5%, 10%, you wouldn't hear one peep from people like myself. And so, we talked about, well, we'll trickle it down to the tenants. Well, we can't make up, we can't increase around 100% or what it might be, a couple hundred bucks to make up that gap. You just can't, because the tenants are struggling out there, and it's not right to them to bear on the burden of this large increase in taxes. It's just not right, and that's the way we feel, and that's the mindset we conduct our business. So, I just wanted to bring that up and make you aware, and then, I know, ma'am, you've mentioned about the income approach. I know back through BOE hearings I've gone to, they always ask the rental rate and so forth, and there used to be a multiplier involved, and they said, well, you know, it used to be 60, 70 times the rental rate would be the value. I'm not sure what that is now.
It depends on the neighborhood.
Okay, and it's gone up over the years, which, you know, is fair, but taking into consideration, the expenses is helpful, because, you know, the last thing we want to do in our business is a tenant move out, because at minimum, you're going to spend $5,000, probably $10,000 to $15,000 when a tenant moves out, and there goes any profit you've made, and you're in the red for years when tenants move out. So, yes, we want to keep them in there and provide them affordable housing to them and not jack up their rates. So, I just wanted to bring that up to everybody's attention from a landlord perspective, what we look at, and we try to be fair, and I would hope that Muskogee County and the state of Georgia would consider a reasonable increase every year instead of what we're experiencing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. All right. And that is, that's all the comments.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for being here. That will conclude the third hearing required under Title 48.
Thank you, those of you that spoke. We really do appreciate you being part of the process. Turn it over to the city attorney for this agenda, and I will make mention that in 30 minutes, we have an executive session scheduled with some individuals that will be calling in from out of town, so we will, if it seems like we're having it at an odd time, that's why. So, at 11 o'clock, we'll break.
Okay, Mayor, the first, I'd ask for a resolution to let Counselors Crabbe and Hickey recuse on the operating budget.
All right, a motion to recuse for those two individual counselors. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
All right, and then, secondly, we've had a request to pull out Section 7 and 19 in this item and vote separately on those, so if somebody wants to make a motion to adopt the entire ordinance except for Section 7 and 19, that would be appropriate.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, that'll be separated out.
All right. The counselors can discuss 7 first, then 19, and we can take one or two votes on those sections. The Section 7 is the Integrated Waste Fund, Section 19 is the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Proposed Budget.
Who made the 7 motion?
Yeah, Counselor Davis, y'all want to?
Yeah, so they can go ahead and be voted on. We've already separated them out. Y'all voted to do that.
If there's no question or more discussion, you can take each one and take a vote.
Yep, so we'll...
I think we already covered that, so we're just on 7 and 19 now.
We didn't vote to approve the budget, did we? No, we just voted to split it out.
Okay.
So, you can make a motion to approve.
We'll take a motion for everything but 7 and 19.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion to that? Ms. Anchor? Ms. Anker.
There we go. Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. This is my first budget season and, you know, pushing this up after all we've been through and listening at the open hearing for tax owners and business operators and residents, you know, the process of our budget seems difficult to me. I'm going to support this. We pulled out 7. I've got some issues with that and I see there's some other concerns. I just wanted, for the record, I hope that we have another, we can have included in the work session. The process of the budget, the way it's been done for many years, maybe we go to a sum zero and start there as opposed to coming in this high and adding to it. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Wait, did we take a vote?
We need to vote, we need to vote on...
Everything but 7 and 19.
Everything but those two. So, it's already been a motion and a second. So, all in favor of that, since we split this up, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? All right.
All right, now, Section 7 is proposed Waste Management Fund Budget, Integrated Waste, $18.6 million. That's up for discussion.
Is it to approve? Motion to approve? Well, no, we're going to vote. We just need a motion to either approve it or deny.
Approve or deny.
Yeah. All right, both of those? Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve those two items. Any discussion? Counselor Tucker, step to the motion. Yes, ma'am.
And I know this is very late in the game. In reference to integrated waste, can we look at later, I think we moved it up, was it $3 for the fee? Was it 3?
Was it 3 or 2? Was it 3?
It's $3, yes.
Okay. I know that Counselor Crabbe asked for some numbers in reference to salaries. Well, it really would be considered salary savings. So, was asking which departments, breaking it down by department, what positions we had, not feel, I guess you would say, traditionally. And we were breaking it down by department and then giving a grand total at the end and that information we did not get today. But it was said probably at the next meeting, which is too late because what the request would have been is to use some of those salary savings to reduce the integrated waste from $3 to $2 increase with the salary savings. But we don't, we don't have that now.
Yeah, I think that's, that was a pretty massive amount of information tried to get in one week. So...
And I don't know if we can come back and look at it afterwards or not. Is that something we can look at?
The rates are going to affect July 1, so you would have to adjust the rates as well.
Could we possibly adjust the rate mid-year depending on, because I don't know if they're going to be able to get that information back to us.
You can come back anytime and reduce a rate, but it's going to...
It was basically looking at the salary savings and how we can pass on the salary savings to our citizens by reducing the integrated waste adjustment that we're about to vote on now, which is $3 and dropping it to $2 based on the information that we received in reference to the salary savings.
Well, as the city attorney mentioned, you can adjust, amend the budget at any point. I mean, even if it's after today, the budget can always be amended. The only thing that I would sort of caution you on in terms of the salary savings would be some of the benefits and how we allocate the benefits, particularly the pension and health insurance. If you're going to essentially unfund positions, those benefits would essentially need to remain intact because we have minimum required contributions as far as the pension and that is allocated by, out by budgeted position, as well as the health, our healthcare contributions for 2026 is allocated out by budgeted position, so.
So, could you just add this to the work session where we can talk about it more in depth? But that was really, the goal was to see if we could use some of those funds for passing the benefit back to the citizens.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And I wonder if we, since there may be different reasons for those two groupings, if we ought to separate those and do those one at a time? I don't, I'm just asking. Counselor Anker? Oh, okay.
No, I mean, I'd like to talk, I turned it off.
All right.
Yeah, if we're going to move it to the work session and talk about the...
Okay.
Okay, if we're going to move it to the work session and talk about the $3, you know, the landfill by weight for commercial and business and anybody that carries truckloads out there went up between 100 and 200%. So, we've got to consider that and that's why I'm a no vote for this. And, but yeah, we can split it out, whatever you want to do, thanks.
Okay, well, right now, there's a motion to approve both of those items. Any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor of approving those two items, say aye. All opposed? Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
All opposed, like sign.
One, two.
The abstentions. Okay, thank you, but that'll pass.
All right. That entire ordinance is passed then and certainly can be revisited during the year depending on the fund. Item 2, we've got the non-operating budgets for July 1, that's ready for adoption.
Motion second, approve item 2. Any discussion on that item? All right, if you post it on the screen, council, you can enter your votes, please. Counselor Anker is a yes?
He's a yes. So, that passes. 3, 4, 5, and 6, we've been calling together. This is a pension plan contribution, general government, public safety, disability, income plan, and death benefit escrow. Those can all be voted on together.
All right, there is a motion and a second from Counselor Tucker. I think she made that. Hang on just a second till we get the light turned on, please. There you go.
Since item number 4 also talks about public safety, then does Counselor Hickey and I have to recuse ourselves from that also?
I would say no, not on this. Just the operating budget was the current salaries and COLAs and everything else.
Okay.
This is different.
We were not there yet. So, there was a motion and a second to approve items 3, 4, 5, and 6. Any further discussion on those items? Hearing none, we'll put it on the screen. Remember, you'll cast one vote, but that will be to approve all four of those items. Okay, that's approved.
That passes. Then we've got the low-income offset for low-income household on garbage rates. We've got the landfill residential commercial fees.
This is item 7. Counselor Davis, did you have a question about that? Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve item 7. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please put it on the screen. Counselors, please, enter your votes.
You got a yes or a no?
All right, so we've got, that passes.
Two no votes on that, that passes. Then we've got some zoning public hearings. Mayor, we'll call these up as quick as we can and ask the petitioner for 101231st Street, going to residential multifamily 1, recommended for approval. Counselor Garrett's district, are they here, petitioner? Could you give me your name and address, please, sir?
Hey, good morning. My name's William Portillo and the street address is 101231st Street, Columbus, Georgia. So, we bought this home late of last year, 2024, and we're just trying to get a rezon from our MF2 to our MF1. That's pretty much just...
For single-family use, right?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Any questions around the table? All right, anybody in the audience want to be heard? We'll bring that back next week for a final vote.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a Sly Road petition. Want to go from residential estate 10 to 1. It is recommended for approval. Anybody on the petition here, Sly Road? Mr. Johnson's here, are there any questions on it?
None from the council.
Then we want to leave it on for next week for a vote. All right. We will bring that back for a vote. Mayor, I don't know of any opposition on that one.
Okay.
Item 10 is a rezoning, Council Kogel's District, 10123rd Street, going from residential multifamily 2 to single-family residential 4, recommended for approval. Is that petitioner here? All right. Give me your name, sir.
Good morning, mayor, councilors, and city staff. I'm Ryan Clements of Aaron and Clements, representing Neighbor Works Columbus. We are requesting rezoning of this parcel so that it can then be developed into two single-family homes, affordable homes.
Okay, any questions around the table? Anybody in the audience want to be heard on the Clemmons petition? We'll vote on it next week. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Clements.
All right, next item, we've got our finance director still here. This is the actual millage rate first reading. We've got 16.07 mills for U.S. District 1 and the others are less that are listed in the chart for the other districts. But any questions for Ms. Alexander and anybody in the audience? If you want to be heard, please raise your hand. Okay. I don't see any hands, mayor.
No, sir.
We'll vote on that next week. That'll be the final vote on the county millage. The school millage may be on first reading next week and then approved in July, but they had a different timetable. We've got a special exception hearing at 4:25, 10 Wenton Road. This is a plasma center, is that right, Mr. Johnson? Proposed use, is a petitioner here? Okay, Mr. Cummings, give them your name and address, please, sir, and tell them what you're asking for.
Yes, good morning. My name's Carson Cummings and I live at 2211 Oak Avenue, which happens to be a midtown. So, the property we're working on, I sold to the owner back in 2021. And just to give you all some context, he bought it as an investment with Walgreens as the tenant in hopes that they would continue to be his tenant. And in 2024, Walgreens, like a lot of other drugstores, closed their doors. And so, we've been sitting there for several months with the closed building on Wenton Road. Through several conversations, we started talking to a plasma center and the company is CSL Plasma. So, I know there's been some concerns and questions, you know, about what does a plasma center really bring to the neighborhood? So, I just wanted to give y'all some general information. So, CSL Plasma is a publicly traded international biopharmaceutical company with over 330 locations or collection centers in the U.S. and they're based in Boca Raton, Florida. They're traded on the Australian Stock Exchange. They have over 17,000 employees. But what I've learned is they're a highly regulated industry and because they're international, they have international regulations, they get audited annually by the FDA. So, it's not like you can just show up and open a plasma center. They have asked the owner to, not only, we've been negotiating this for quite some time, he has to paint the building, reseal, strike the parking lot, redo the sign out front. All the lighting will be, you know, facing in towards the building. And CSL has let us know that they'll basically take the building down to the concrete floors, to the walls, to the roof, and they basically start over. And they say their investment will be no less than $3 million in, into the building. The average employees in each location is between 40 and 60 employees with 80% of the employees being full-time. The salaries in that location are expected to be in excess of $2 million annually. CSL pays out over $3 million annually in donor payments to the donors that come in. Another important point, I think, is the business hour. So, they're either 7:00 or 7:30 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. So, it's not like they're open late at night or after dark. Their primary business is to produce life-saving therapies for patients using plasma as the raw material. They're primarily treating patients with rare diseases. And not just anybody can show up. They have a process, you have to be in good health, and then once you pass the testing, then you're able to give plasma. And one other thing I thought was important is they have a community relations representative at each location, where they get involved in the communities, support local community organizations, including nonprofits. And the reason for this is, tell me if I'm right, wrong, or indifferent, is in this current zoning neighborhood commercial, anything over 5,000 square feet that's a single-use has to go through the special exception process. So, that's really all I have.
All right, Counselor, Counselor Huff?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. We've had a lot of spirited conversations and it's gone back and forth, but we had a chance to finally get to the bottom line. And the bottom line was, there's no apparent opposition at this point of the ones that called me initially. They were able to work it out, so everybody's on a page of move ahead, make it happen. How long does this project take?
That's the unknown. We asked that question on the call last week and they could not tell us exactly when, but I'm guessing it'll be no earlier than the end of, into 2025.
Square foot of the building, is what, a good over 100?
14,479 square feet and it sits on just under 1 and 1/2 acres, 77 parking spaces, so plenty of parking.
But I appreciate the council people that called and spoke with me and then I spoke with the different entities yesterday. So, everybody's on the go page, so I appreciate all your hard work.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any questions around the table? Anybody in the audience, ma'am, come on up and give them your name and address.
My name is Melissa Hughler. My address is 1824 West Park Drive here in Columbus. My question to the gentleman is... Oh, this podium, okay.
Thank you.
My question to the gentleman was, was there any other buyers that wanted to buy the building that was on Wenton Road? Because it's a plasma center a mile up the road from where this is supposedly supposed to be. I don't know where the gentleman went, but that's my question to you. Was there any other buyers that wanted to purchase the building other than a plasma center? Because I do know around that area there, this is your district, Huff, which is behind you. I have never heard of any community meetings or any community engagement to talk about or speak about this building or what this building could possibly be in that area. So, that's my concern. Even though I'm not in the area, it does impact me as well. So, I would like to know, was there any other buyers that had interest in the building?
Come on, come on over.
Good questions. First of all, the building's not for sale. The owner does not want to sell the building. So, we had Family Dollar Dollar Tree come to the table. They were interested. They've had some financial issues, if you read the news. So, we were kind of down to those two uses and felt like this was a better use for the property. As far as buyer life on Macon Road, which as a matter of fact, I was involved in the se... As far as BioLife on Macon Road, which as a matter of fact, I was involved in the sale of that old drugstore, to the investor that bought it out of Charlotte to put BioLife in there, they do their market studies, they decide where they need to go, and this is where they landed. So as far as competition, I really don't have a advantage.
Ma'am, you need to come to the microphone. We can't hear you.
No, I mean, I'm just doing my job, which is to help my client lease their building.
Oh, okay. So you're not actually the per se the owner? Okay, well, this question would be directed to the council person. Have you had any type of community engagement? Or have you put out any flyers relevant to this particular property and how it would impact the community?
I've returned all calls and met with everyone that contacted me about the issue.
No, I'm saying you yourself, you saying individuals who have contacted you. A lot of people in your community are not aware of that, of that building, of that sale. So what I'm asking you is.
No, ma'am, I have not.
Okay, are you opposed to actually putting up and having a community engagement meeting with your community to talk about the impact of that building? Yes or no?
No, I'm not opposed to that.
Okay, so I will contact your office to set up a date and time.
Contact my office. Well, slow down for a minute. Let me get this on the table. Let's be perfectly clear today. I've contacted everyone that called. I've met with Midtown Inc., which represents the area. And normally, normally, and when we get in these situations, if we have several people that are opposed, we set meetings up. I set meetings up. I don't know what everybody else does. I set meetings up according to pushback and people not wanting something in the area. So when I met with Midtown Inc., they were opposed in the beginning. And they had meetings with other people in the area. They had other constituents in the neighborhood that met down, and they put out a petition, and they all met.
Okay, Midtown Inc. is actually a nonprofit organization and a business. I asked you, have you put out any kind of engagement flyers?
And I said, no.
But you're telling me you only spoke with individual businesses?
No, 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 you're not listening.
I need you to engage your community, sir.
You asked me if I put out flyers. I said, no.
Exactly. And I asked you, was you opposed to meeting with your community?
I'm not opposed to.
So we don't have to go back and forth. I'll contact your office to set up an engagement meeting.
Hey, hey, let's go one at a time so that people can hear, ma'am.
Exactly.
Go ahead.
I will contact your office so we don't have to go on back and forth. I will contact your office because this right here, purchasing a building and revitalizing a building, does actually have, need to have community engagement in the community because it does impact the individuals that lives over there. So you speaking with nonprofit organizations who may or may not have individuals, certain individuals in the community that they target is not acceptable. So I will contact your office, and we will set up a meeting until you can engage your community. Thank you.
Yeah. And in addition to, in addition to speaking with Midtown, there was a group of constituents that live in the area that put out a petition. And it was also another group that were in opposition. So I have met with people who live in the area other than Midtown Inc. At the PAC meeting, they had a constituent of the area that lives in the area that came to the PAC meeting to speak in favor of what was going on and met with others in the area. But I'd be more than happy to meet with you. These type situations, different council people handle them different ways. In my time, that particular area between there and the East Wenton area, they usually come out on the phones and in large numbers when they have a problem with something. So give me a call, and we'd be glad to meet with you.
Mr. Mayor, bro, tell.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, I appreciate you coming up. Just wanted to ask, as far as the process for this type situation, the request for exception was put in by the owner of the property. There was no sale of this property. And a letter is, the process is, your department sends out a letter to all within 300 feet, I believe. And only two of those were opposed to this. And Mr. Councillor Huff talked to everybody that wanted to be heard on it. So it's typically in this situation, there's not a public meeting to be called. I mean, it's just, the process is the process. So this is a special exception. It's not the same as a rezoning. So I just wanted to clear that up for everybody.
Well, and to be further clear, this is not about the use of the property. That use of plasma center is a medical clinic or medical lab. It is already allowed in that zoning classification. This special exception is only regarding the size of the use. Prior to 2005, when that 14,000 square foot building was built specifically for Walgreens, you did not have a 5,000-use limit. That, it didn't come along to 2005 when we did the UDO in neighborhood commercial. So that left a lot of buildings that are single users non-conforming. We have done a special exception, I believe, for George Military College on Manchester Expressway across the street from St. Francis. Chapman's is the reason we have this in the ordinance because that was over 10,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet, and they were a single user. This is only about the use of this building. You can have that lab there all day long today.
Yeah. Well, I think all the councillors have had similar situations in our districts, and we handled the same way. So I just wanted to make that clear for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings.
If there's nobody else.
There are no more hands. It's up for councillor's decision.
All right, motion and a second to approve. I'll, if you put it on the screen and if you would enter your votes, please. All right. And that's approved.
That is approved. All right, our last formal item, Mayor, is resolution amending 127-25 to add one more exception for situations where a third-party broker is awarded a contract under the management of purchasing.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none. Please put it on the screen. And councillors, if you would, enter your votes.
That's approved.
Okay.
Now that we are at the appointed time for an executive session, we need to take a break. We've got potential litigation and personnel are the topics, Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel and potential litigation? All right, there's a motion to go in. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second to the, to the motion, councillor?
No, I was anxious.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. And I will ask you all to clear the chambers for just a little while while we go into an executive session. We will, we will come back in regular session.
All right. This council has been in executive session. We discussed potential litigation and, where did my attorney go? And personnel. No votes were taken during the meeting. So we'll go back to the agenda, and we are currently at the public agenda. And I'll remind you all, when you come up, you'll be allowed five minutes. And I apologize again upfront because I will try to cut you, keep you right to the five-minute timeframe. You can come back for an additional three minutes if you're unable to complete your comments. And when you come up, you just give your name. You don't have to give your street address, but just give your zip code when you come up. That seems to be working best. The first is Ms. Anna Adams regarding appreciation and suggestions for the Columbus Police Department. But she may not. Is everybody in from outside?
Very close.
Okay. Ms. Adams?
I'm coming in.
Okay, you're good. We'll wait for you. Come on. No, you're fine. Okay, well, if you want to sit at this table over here, and we'll turn the light on for that one. Lindsay, would you hit that light so that we can get her? Oh, it doesn't have a light on. Just use the microphone. Ms. Adams, again, you'll have five minutes. And at the end of that five minutes, if you're unable to finish, you can come back for another three after the meeting. All right, you can begin.
Come on, I guess, good morning, good afternoon. I'm lost on my time schedule right now.
Yes, ma'am.
I just come here today to commend the law enforcement in this town. They're doing such a well job. And I'm very concerned about people that are staying on longer than 30 years. Because the people that have joined the police department at the bottom, they can't move up and their light can't shine for all the good that they do because they need to be acknowledged too. You know, because if you get them, they're discouraged and all, then they'll leave the police department. We don't need that because they're doing really well with being as full force as they are. And I never want to see Chief Mathis leave because he has done so much for the city. I've never seen him my whole life, and I've been here all my life. Oh, by the way, my address, I live at 1110 Neal Drive. And that street, when I first moved over there about 10 years ago, there was so much human trafficking, drugs, and all kinds of stuff. And now it's pretty quiet. It's really quiet, and I really appreciate that from all y'all. And stuff. But I do have one question that's outside this, is that what is the city law on taxi cabs without meters in their car? Not Lyft, not Uber, but a taxi cab. What is the law about that? How are they to charge? I thought they were supposed to have a meter in their car in order to charge and not go by GPS. Because my GPS might be different than their GPS, and mine may be cheaper mileage than theirs.
I don't have an answer for you. The Deputy City Attorney, May.
Are you asking that taxi cabs specifically, not Ubers and Lyfts and other transport?
Yeah, just taxi cabs because.
So it doesn't have a, doesn't have a meter?
Don't have a meter in the car, but they're charging me, and I don't want to go to jail. Well, I used to drive a taxi cab for 25 years, and we always had to have a meter.
I would have to check into that. The taxi cab regulations have somewhat become superseded by state law on motor vehicle transit. But I think there is some regulation still of taxi cabs under the Columbus Police Department. And they could tell you what they inspect and require of vehicles at this point.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I wanted to ask something else, but it flew out my brain. I got, I had a brain crap here. But I can't stay later because I got to get home and see about myself because of my health issues and all. It's good to see all y'all's faces. Y'all just keep eating prayers. I really appreciate it.
Ms. Adams, thank you for being here today.
Okay. Where's Lindsay?
You take care of you, okay?
I'll do my best, sir. God help you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. And next is Ms. Mallard regarding observations as a transplant and community advocate. Welcome, Ms. Mallard. Just give your name and your zip code.
Can you hear me?
I can.
All right. Good day, Mayor Henderson, council members, Bible believers, and extended neighbors. My name is Radia Mallard, and I live in zip code 31909. My family has been a part of this community for over 20 years, and we choose, we chose to retire here and have a vested interest in the growth and prosperity of the people of Columbus. Today, I want to talk about the disruption of corruption. Disruption is necessary for change. Notice I didn't say violence. So what is disruption? For the purpose of this dialogue, I refer to the Cambridge Dictionary definition, which reads that disruption is the action of preventing something, especially a system, process, or event, from continuing as usual or as expected. The Messiah was a disruptor. He exposed and tore down oppressive systems of mental and spiritual slavery. He fought on kingdom principles. I am not here to address you as a representative of the social gospel. That reduces the Messiah to a political figure. I'm here to address you as a kingdom citizen. This city is full of oppression. For the last 20 years, I've watched things as an outsider. And the overall view isn't good. Sure, there are pockets of good here, people that care. But their voices go ignored, unheard, mocked, and ultimately silenced. And the city, it keeps rolling along. It's the have and have-nots, the well-connected, the interconnected, and the not-connected. I'm not on the side of any of these. I am on the side of Yahweh, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. I come in his name today. God said that the poor will always be among you and to always consider them because he is with them. Giving to the poor is the only time we are lenders to God. That's in Proverbs 19 and 17. But this city has made giving and helping those less fortunate into a cash cow. Fruitless programs enriched themselves while children on the south side of Columbus are walking around with no shoes, as if living in a third-world country. This I have witnessed with my own eyes. God is not pleased. Clicks run rampant. Secret handshakes and alliances undermine the very fabric of this community. It's unspoken compromise and connection fueled not by love, but greed, envy, covetousness, and relentless worldly kingdom building. In the end, the inner circles are nothing but crabs in a barrel. No one wins, and it's the everyday people who suffer. God is not pleased. Examine yourselves. Better yet, invite God to examine your hearts. And if the shoe fits you, repent to God. Trash it and get a new pair of shoes. If you don't believe in God, take a moment to read the Code of Ethics established in Appendix Two of the city charter. It's a great foundational read for the elected official, the appointed officer, or employee of the consolidated government, or any office, department, or agency in Columbus. A word from the Book of Isaiah was given to this city about a month ago. I'm in agreement with that word. So is all of heaven. Corruption only prospers for a season. That season has ended. In case you haven't noticed, this city, and subsequently the nation, is under judgment. Its foundations are crumbling, its idols are falling, and the open heavens above it are now brass. But our loving Father has a remedy for all things. He sent His Son that if we believe in Him, we will not perish. That's John's 3:16. For those that believe, if you have witnessed wrongdoing and not spoken up.
Ms. Mallard, I'm sorry, you've hit you five minutes. If you want to sit around and wait until after the clerks?
I'll wait.
You can come back for another three.
I'll wait, thank you, Mayor Henderson.
I hate to interrupt you, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Mr. Antonio Harge representing Primetime Barber Shop regarding a denial on ARP grant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Antonio Harge, zip code 31909. I first like to say thank you for allowing me some of your time. I started my business back in 2014 on South Lumpkin Road. In late 2019, I was able to move to a. In late twenty nineteen, I was able to move to a spot on Victory Drive. And soon after opening, COVID hit, and then right after that, the governor shut down all the barber shops. So I wasn't able to, I moved my business from Victory, from South Lunkin Road to Victory Drive. So during that time when COVID hit, I wasn't able to get my business license. I didn't come down here to the city because the barber shops were closed anyway. So in twenty twenty-two, after we were able to open up, I came down to the city to get all my business licenses for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And since I had moved businesses and I wasn't in this, on South Lunkin Road anymore, it was kind of like trying to figure out how to do the taxes. And so lady from downstairs, she came from around the desk, and she told me the easiest way for me to do this was to say, I closed my business in twenty nineteen, and I'm just opening up again on Victory Drive. And that way, I wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to figure all this out. So at the time, right after COVID, I hadn't worked in a year and a half, so I went that route and did that. I moved to Victory Drive. I got me everything straight. Twenty twenty-three, they decided to do the ARP grant. So I start working, it was a guy who came to Overflow Ministries, and he talked with us. I started going in Chamber of Commerce and speaking with Tracy Herring. It took me like two and a half weeks to get all my green checks, to do everything that I need to do to get the loan. I got all my green checks, and she told me, she said, well, it has to go to city council, and if they pass it, then it just goes to the city manager. All he does is sign, write your check and sign it. She called me back like two, oh, two or three days later and said, congratulations, city council passed you. So you should be getting a check within seventy-two hours. Well, she called me back like two days later and said that the city manager denied me because my city licenses for those two years when the barber shop was closed was not, I didn't pay those. And I would pay, I told, I tried to rectify it and say, I will pay those two years and catch everything up. But he said, no, it was, no. And so I'm hoping with everything that happened over the last couple of weeks that we can, you know, revisit this. Because I got the government, I mean, I passed every, all the requirements for the federal government, I passed. It was just something the city said.
Well, Depp, I knew, I knew though that somebody had shared with me because I asked why you were denied, and I think part of the challenge with the ARP funding and, and those grants that were being made at the time is they had to follow the United States Treasury guidelines. So whatever the federal guideline says is what we had to do, we had very little wiggle room, so to speak. So we could go back and say, well, let's just reconnect that piece where you did not have a license. And unfortunately, I may be wrong, but I think it, the issue with yours is you had to have been licensed during that time. And I, and I know it sounds crazy because of COVID, the shop shut down because they were not allowing any beauty shops or anything to run. But that is the, that is the federal requirement for access to the ARP funds that if we violate, we run the risk of having to pay that money back.
Yes, sir, but when I, when I went down to the Chamber of Commerce, they have the green checks that you have to get. Having a city license wasn't on there. Having the state license, which I did, having, paying my rent and paying my, everything at the shop was on there, and I did all that. It didn't say you had to have a city license.
There were two layers of approval. One was with the chamber because I know we had a hard time getting the chamber folks to want to even apply for the money. And we actually went, I know Counselor Woodson and a few others, Counselor Huff, and we had gone door-to-door trying to knock on some of the businesses, getting them to, to try to, try to take advantage of this. I'm sorry, Counselor.
I'm saying I actually was the one that started the Black Chamber, so I got my mic.
Okay. What I'm trying to tell you is that apparently you weren't licensed during the time, and you didn't have a license with the city. I may be wrong. But Deputy City Manager, do you have anything that? Hang on.
Mayor, that's correct. The, the chamber in the city had two different sets of responsibilities, if you will, and things that they were looking at. Although the chamber provided the approval, the city looked at it something else, and again, based on those regulations that we had to adhere to. And that's where the denial came in because the license, the business license was not obtained prior to, you know, the start of what we needed it to. I think that was twenty-one?
July one of twenty twenty.
July one of twenty twenty, but I'll ask Deputy City Manager Hodge if she will come, and she can explain that process to you.
Yes, so the review process determined that this business was not eligible to receive these grant funding. Had to show that there was a license before July one of twenty twenty, and this business was closed December thirty-one of twenty eighteen, and the new current license was not obtained until July twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-one. So it did not meet the requirements for the ARP grant funding.
But my business was never closed. I did that after, if you go back, that happened in twenty twenty-two, when it says I closed it. And I just did that because, so I wouldn't have to pay the back years. I had been closed for almost two years. They had, the, I mean, the governor shut the barber shops down for two years, and the city was sparingly open down here even to get your license.
So the documents that we have show that the business was closed as of December thirty-one, twenty eighteen, and the new license did not, was not opened until July twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-one. There was a requirement that the business be in existence as of July one of twenty twenty, and there was no business license of record at that time.
When was that? If you look at it, when does it say that I said I closed it in twenty, December thirty-first, twenty eighteen? That was in twenty twenty-two. That was after COVID and everything when I came down to get everything straight.
I'll have, I'll have to look that up. I just have an, I just have the email that the project manager had sent regarding this particular application.
Yes, that happened in twenty twenty-two after COVID was over, and I was coming down, downstairs to get my business licenses correct. And I was advised that I could, you could do the, pay these years, but I had moved buildings anyway. I wasn't on South Lunkin Road anymore. I was on Victory Drive. And so my old license was on South Lunkin Road. Since I had moved and I had been over there two years, she was like, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot to try to figure this out when you're not even in the same building. So if, this is the easiest way to do it, she said.
I'm not familiar with what an employee would have stated to you. I just have the documents of where you closed your business and opened anyone.
I think the challenge is that it just was no license for the period where it says there must be a license. We've got a couple of counselors that want to make some comments. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I was going to ask, is it customary for an individual to advise a business owner to close their business in order to basically not pay occupational taxes from two thousand eighteen till, I guess it was the twenty twenty-one time? Is it customary for someone within CCG to advise that business owner to close their business to avoid, whatever the case, paying the occupational taxes? Or maybe it's, the process would take so long, so we're just going to do it quickly, close it. He signed an affidavit and really not understanding the implications that will come of him being advised to close his business at that time in twenty, was it twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
In twenty twenty-two, so, and actually, we had, we had been talking about small business grants prior to that twenty twenty-two date. So is it, is it customary for somebody to advise a business owner who could be potentially awarded a grant to help him with those arrears that he had? Is it customary for our staff to say, well, let's close it? That way, that's the easiest process?
I, I, I wouldn't think that that's a customary process. That's not what they would typically tell a business, that a business owner would come in and say, I closed my business and I'm opening a new one. I mean, the, the employee would not know that information.
Yeah, because it seems like he was advised to close his business to make the process easier in reference to doing his occupational taxes. But our, I'm gonna say it, our advisement cost him possibly forty thousand dollars, which if he would have stayed, and I'm sure that since you weren't in business, your occupational taxes, I think you had a amount for your occupational taxes from that COVID time. It wasn't even that much, but hundreds of dollars cost him forty thousand dollars because he was advised.
I, I don't know that that's the case, that they would have advised him of that. I, I don't know that.
So-
When, when was the, can I ask a question? When, when, when was the license, was, had to have a license as of twenty-one?
There had to be, as of July one of twenty twenty was the requirements of the grant. And the documents that we have show the business was closed as of December thirty-one, twenty eighteen, and not reopened until July twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-one.
So he got that advice long after.
Yeah, do you know?
Right, so the business was actually closed in our system on May twentieth of twenty twenty, not twenty-two.
So May twenty twenty, is that when he came? Or you all reached out to him after that? How, how did that work out for us?
He would have come into our office and signed and filled out his final return. That's the document that the Deputy City Manager is referring to. The signature on that document is in May of twenty twenty, and that's when the account was closed in our system. Although he'd indicated on the document that he ceased operations as of twenty eighteen.
So the document stated in twenty twenty that it closed in our system, the business?
We physically closed out his account in twenty twenty.
In twenty twenty, May of twenty twenty.
Yes, ma'am.
And then he came to-
He came back in twenty twenty-one and opened up in July twenty eighth? Twenty eighth of twenty twenty-one and opened up his license.
Twenty twenty, were we in the modified COVID schedule at that time? Like, was the building open?
We were still here. Yes, we were still here.
Okay.
Well, since I was in a new building, this is, this is why, how she said I was able to do that because I wasn't in the same building anymore. I had moved from South Lunkin Road to Victory Drive. If I had, if I had have been in the same building, I would have had to just pay, pay it. There was no way around it. Since I had moved buildings, she said, you can say you shut your business down and open it back up, and that way you won't have to pay those taxes, and that's what I did. I mean, it was COVID. I hadn't worked in two years. I saved, tried to save a hundred dollars, but it cost me forty.
So the transactions that he did where he closed the business, that he opened up, was it all one day?
No.
Of closed business, open the business?
No, ma'am.
No.
No, he, the account was, his prior, his first account with us was closed in May of twenty twenty, like physically closed out in our system. He had to come to our office and he signed, he provided his final paperwork, and it was physically closed out by a representative in the revenue division on May nineteenth of twenty twenty, May twenty, twenty twenty. And then, then he came back the following July of twenty twenty-one and opened up a new account.
I, I would ask, because it seemed like he had some, if you don't mind, Mr. Hodge.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Aker?
Yeah, I, I didn't know. It sounded like maybe you'd talked a little bit with the Director of Finance or Assistant City Manager Pam Hodge. Is this the first time you've talked to him?
Yeah, I've never seen them before.
Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be a great help to, to meet together with them and, and try to get a timeline written out and to assure you that, that we at least are listening and doing the best that we can within their laws that we're, we're held by. But I'd just say, sir, I appreciate your heart. I appreciate small business. I appreciate a man who's trying to do the, the right thing and, and start a small business and pay his taxes. And it sounds like there was a gap and there's some difficulties there. But I think in the future too, it's good for us to hear from you because we've got to make it easier for business to thrive, and that's our goal. And sometimes I've had these issues myself. It's hard going into that department and, and get different things, and you're trying to learn it. It's, it's hard to pay your taxes too. So I, I appreciate you coming. I just wanted to say that as a small business owner, you know, with you. Thank you.
Counselor Chambers?
Quick question. How much? As far as the ARP funds, how much is available?
Available?
How much?
How much is available? I believe it's, I believe it's-
What was originally available or what?
What's available today?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. It looked like, I mean, sir, I apologize, it looked like you were giving some bad advice. But I, I do want us to try to see if we can work with him. But I, I, I would like to know that number as far as how much is available with ARP funds. All right, thank you.
Counselor Hickey?
That was my question.
Okay. And you may want to just put a timeline on paper so the council can take a look at it and see when he actually was licensed and wasn't licensed because it sounds like the information he got, that may or may not have been accurate information, was after the license was already gone. And if that's the case, even if they'd have given him the right information, he still wasn't licensed at the time that the requirement said he had to be. So, so if you can work that up, get it to council.
And for the record, I have never shut my shop down. I've been open for the last thirteen years. From South Lunkin Road to Victory Drive, the governor shut it down. I've never, my business has been open for thirteen years.
Well, yes, sir.
I just want to also just remind you all so that there may be others in the same situation where we have made a denial based on the fact that they were, did not have what they needed prior to that cutoff.
Agreed. Counselor Tucker?
Yeah, and I, and, and I do know Primetime has been open in the city, and they do a lot of community stuff for young boys, like free haircuts during school time. But what I, I wanted to say is I do know that certain, there were certain things that, that were closed, were shut down based on the state. So putting, pulling that information as well to see what the governor had in place in reference to certain places couldn't be open because I think, wasn't it restaurants? I know.
Estheticians?
It was gyms, gyms and hair salons and, and barber shops. But just adding that information in there as well, I think that'd be important to, to see.
All right. Thank you. Next is Ms. Teresa Alameen regarding City Manager Firing and Pension Plan. Welcome, Ms. Alameen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that day is coming pretty soon where I won't be able to make it in here. But for the time being, here I am. And I am Teresa Alameen in District Three, three one nine zero six. So I have unlimited time up here. What's going on?
I'm limited up to about four minutes and forty-five seconds.
Well, you're going to put the little numbers up here?
No, they don't, they don't appear on that one.
Oh.
I'll, I'll let you know when you have one minute left.
It's over there.
No, ma'am.
You know, I like to not go over, so I need to look over there?
No, ma'am. I'm going to stop this because you, for just a second.
I time myself.
I don't know if there is a timer on that one.
It is.
Is it?
And it says I'm at four twenty-four.
Yeah, if you want to move over there, I'll start it again when you get over there.
Oh.
Best I can do.
That's good, since my neck doesn't turn too well. Well, no, I've been sitting enough. Thank you. So I'll start now, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I'm just gonna drop this phrase on you. It's a phrase I heard a few weeks ago, and it's really been sticking with me. Love is the greatest revenge. I've learned that it's music and culture, songs with that phrase. Love is the greatest revenge, isn't that? Love is the greatest revenge. Isn't that strong? Because I do love Columbus. And I have watched Columbus get better and better. Isaiah Hughley loved being city manager. He really loved his job. And I watched him get better and better at it in the fourteen and a half years I've been in this great city. He loved his job. And Mayor Portishe, I got to meet three of the mayors. I don't know if you realize how unusual it is for a city manager to serve four different mayors. Every city manager I've known in Durham, they left with the mayor they served. They never got to serve another mayor. That's how it usually goes. Mayor Portishe, he got so mad at me when I got mad at Isaiah. Mayor Portishe, he loved being mayor. He still acted like he was the mayor the time I knew him. And I know you know what I'm talking about. And he was so proud that he was the first to recognize the talents of Isaiah Hughley. He was the first to recognize the talents. He said, I was the first who started paying him the big bucks. That's what he said to me. He was so proud of that. And when you became mayor, you said at the start of your first term, I'm gonna let Isaiah lose. I said, wait a minute, what do you mean, what do you mean, what do you mean, let Isaiah lose? You're the mayor. What do you mean? Isaiah embraced that direction. And I said to him several times, stop working so hard. You don't make too much money. Stop working so hard. Because he worked so hard. The thing that struck me about him most, he was, he loved problem solving. I'll never forget, and maybe you remember Deputy Goodwin, I called him on the weekend about that overflowing trash on Victory Drive. I couldn't believe the emails going back and forth. Number one, number two, number four, number five, number seven, number eight, number nine. Why? Why? There's no just cause in that. I never thought you would get the eight votes. Never thought number eight would do it. Never thought he would do it. A lawyer, there is no just cause in what happened to Isaiah Hughley. It was just wrong. But love is the greatest revenge. And there's a lot of love out here for Isaiah Hughley. An eighty-six-year-old woman came to my house in East Winton, and she first saying, Isaiah Hughley, Isaiah Hughley, everybody's talking about what you did. It was wrong. And I know my time is running out, Mr. Mayor. And I'll talk about that pension plan, that you gotta put more money in for these employees. I'll talk about that next time, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay. Isaiah Hughley loves public service, and we love Isaiah Hughley. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next is Mr. John Michael Watford regarding mud buildup on Roaring Branch Road. Mr. Watford here? Okay. Uh, Mr.
Yes, sir, Counselor Davis.
Mayor, if I may, just correct me if I'm out of order. I saw that Mr. Watford was gonna come and that he was gonna talk about mud on Roaring Branch. I took the liberty and rode all up and down Roaring Branch. I didn't see the mud he was talking about, but there's a lot of leaves and buildup and stuff like that there. And I'm just wondering to maybe address this matter if they could, well, if you could get a street sweeper maybe to run down the backside of Roaring Branch. That may be what he was referring to, but I just wanted to.
We can have somebody look at that. I think his biggest, I think his biggest challenge is where the silt is coming in from the lake.
Oh.
It was, you can't even get a boat out there. That was his problem. And that, that lake is not really overseen by us. That's really a Georgia power.
Well, I'm sorry. I took it as Roaring Branch Road.
Yep, but we'll still check on that and see if it's, that looks that bad, we can get it cleaned up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hit you loud again. You got it? Okay. All right, next is Mr. Lucas Melton regarding Flat Rock cleanup and city personnel changes. Good afternoon.
How you doing?
I'm good. Just state your name and your zip code.
Lucas Melton, District Three, three one nine oh seven.
Thank you.
All right. I'm a product of Columbus, Georgia. I was raised in First African Baptist Church where I developed a love for Christ, which brings me to my first topic, Flat Rock Park. Somewhere in the scripture it says that the Lord split open the rocks and water gushed out. One of my favorite places to hang out in Columbus, Georgia is Flat Rock Park. It is a natural wonder. It is proof that our Creator has anointed Columbus, Georgia, and He has favor for us. And to let nature dwindle away, to let nature go unkept, to not actually take care of what God has given us, to me, is an indicator of the values of the people who are responsible for keeping that park. Which I believe from my research, Glenn Davis, Crab, share that, you know, that area, and Gary Allen, yeah, Gary Allen, my bad, sorry, I look alike, just playing. But so I'm thinking maybe beyond the cleanup, there is a summer job for a teenager. Maybe there's some type of program that parks and recreation can implement that gives our tourists, many of them that come through here from the military and love to walk through a park. A lot of people come from a place they've never seen an actual forest, when you're from like, you know, the West Coast and Nebraska or some other places like that. So I think that it shows the initiative of the city council and the people who represent that district to say, you know what, let's clean this place up. Why are there trees that are almost falling? Why are there trees that are on the ground? Why are there playpens, or excuse me, playgrounds that look like they come from a horror movie in nineteen sixty that are just abandoned? Right? So, and I take that and I transition to another topic. And I see some of the same people who have led Flat Rock Park dwindle to nothing are the same ones who, for some reason, led the, what I call a witch hunt against Isaiah Hughley. That being said, by profession, I run an organization. We do voter contact, voter engagement, civic engagement work, the type of stuff that doesn't really happen in Columbus a lot, obviously. And I've been quoted in shame that I live in Columbus, but I don't work here. Well, that's about to change. That is about to change because of what happened to Isaiah Hughley. In my career, unfortunately, I have had to fire people. It's part of working in corporate America. But anytime I did that, I looked those people in the eye. I didn't stare down at the desk. I didn't whisper. I didn't quibble. To stare at the desk, to not be able to look someone in the eye when you're firing them, is indicative that you know the shame that you should be experiencing for doing that to that man after twenty years of service here in this city. And I'll say this, times are gonna change. I don't really know what the plan is when it comes to Isaiah, but I will tell you this. You just started something in this city, something that many of you never thought would happen here and thought that could happen here. But I promise you, the result of what you did to Isaiah Hughley will create a very, very strong civic engagement movement that will see to it that people who do not represent the values of Columbus will not continue to have the ability to do that. It all comes back to how we treat the parks in our district. I don't know what they do in Nebraska, but where I come from, Columbus, Georgia, you make a mess, you pick it up.
Thanks, sir. All right, next is Mr. Johnny Flakes III representing IMA regarding IMA's position on the city manager's termination. Welcome, Pastor.
Johnny Flakes, three one nine zero four. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Deputy City Manager, Assistant Attorney, and to all of you, city councilors, to all of those who were here and had to leave, many of them, and I, to those who are still here, to you as well and those who are watching on TV. On May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, we witnessed under the veil of darkness, after the city council chamber was nearly empty, then added to the existing executive session's agenda, a personnel issue for the city council to address. After approximately an hour or more, the city council members reappeared and voted to terminate city manager Isaiah Hughley. The vote was seven to three. In light of this hasty decision, as president of the international, interdenominational ministerial alliance, I along with others come to voice our position statement regarding the firing of the city manager Isaiah Hughley. We want to make it crystal clear to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and to the council that we adamantly disagree with the firing of city manager Isaiah Hughley. Your continued reckless, short-sighted decisions, actions demonstrates to this community, state, and nation your incompetence as well as your racial vindictive motives towards city manager Isaiah Hughley. And your scheme to dismantle certain African-American leaders and women leaders in the Columbus, Georgia Consolidated City Government that don't go along just to get along and who want, won't remain silent. The seven votes to terminate city manager Isaiah Hughley spoke loudly to satisfy certain interests promoting community and racial division, also showing the lack of respect for a loyal city government employee with over twenty-six years of dedicated service to the city and communities. Under city manager Isaiah Hughley, leadership and city management, it resulted to the Wallet Hub study to rank Columbus, Georgia as the twelfth best-run city in America out of a hundred and forty-eight of the largest US cities that were evaluated. This ranking was based on the operating efficiency of each city, which involved comparing a quality of services score derived from thirty-six metrics across six service categories like financial stability, education, and safety against the city total per capita budget. With this credible, no bias, objective performance outcome data, this afternoon, we stand together with others in this city to let you know what you did was wrong, careless, and financially irresponsible, not representing the best interest of the city as a whole. Galatians six seven tells us, do not be deceived. God is not mocked. For whatever one sows, that will be also what he or she reaps. Which means that your actions and choices have consequences, and you will experience the results of those choices. It's a principle of justice and accountability where the seed of your actions determines the harvest you will receive. When city officials engage in misrepresentation, it can have significant negative impact on the city and its residents. The seven city councilors, you have done that.
Pastor Flack?
Thank you so very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
God bless you. May he keep you as our prayer.
All right, next, next we're gonna ask y'all to kind of hold that down so that we can get through the rest of the agenda, please. All right, next is Mr. Lamarck Lawrence regarding working things out.
Mark Lawrence, three one eight oh eight. To the mayor of this great and wonderful city, your pro team, and all of those who work with you, I come in peace. I want to work with you, and I won't dare to call each of you names. I want to work with you to galvanize a better city, a better community, a better place to live. It has come to my attention that there is some scandals, some seen and some unseen. Been calling out my name before. That went over. It's okay. And there are even councillors that will leave when other people come to the podium. But I'm gonna leave at the ballot box, and I'm gonna make sure people that go to the box to vote will remember that they got up out their seats. Not every time, but almost every time, that people come from the clergy background to talk. It's an insult, but I want to work with you. Now, if you know who you are, you could just wave your hand in the back and finish your Chick-fil-A if that's what you would like. But I would like to say, we need to collaborate together to solve the problem that is going on. I have family in New York and ask them, what the y'all are doing in Columbus? And I don't want to answer that question because sometime I don't know. But I can say that there's a lack of responsibility for those who have. Some of their elected officials are acting like children. When I was a child, I acted as a child. But when I became an adult, I act like an adult. I come to challenge all of you. If you don't have my number, it's available, please call me and ask me, Mark, what can you do for me? Or what can I do for you? And I would gladly say that I want to help this community to survive. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do. What can we do to work together? What can I do to put my hand with yours? And I don't have to quote what Dr. Martin Luther King said. I'm gonna talk what Mark Lawrence have to say. We need to work together. If we don't work together, that means we are divided. And when you're divided, you will fall. We have to work together. We have to do better. Listen to this, two things. We have to have some goals. We have to share a level of responsibility to make those goals be finished. We have to have shared goals. The goal is to get the citizens of this community to understand what the politics of the community is so that they might have a better understanding. You know, I'm gonna say this, and I better quit because I'm a very emotional person. I sat here, and I know you announced that you had to go in an executive session. I have a church member over in Columbus Hospice. Family been waiting on me ever since about ten thirty. But that person has since passed away since then. You know, it's so hard to try to do community work and do the work of the Lord and see all of this bickering going on.
Mr. Lawrence? All right. We'll move on to the. We'll move on to the City Managers, Deputy City Manager's agenda.
Okay, Mayor and Members of Council, the first item on the agenda.
There's motion and second to remove item, to approve items one and two. Is there any discussion to that? All right. I think he said one and two. So, we had, we put it up on the screen, y'all please vote, but remember that one vote approves both of those items. Councillors, if you'd enter your votes. Okay, that, that passes.
And for the record, those items are Americ-Don First Responder Grant and the Norfolk Southern Safety First Grant for Fire EMS. There are no matching funds for either of those grants. Item three is a donation to the Columbus Police Department.
Motion, second to approve item three, the ballistic vest. Any discussion on those items? Hearing none, please put it on the screen, and councillor, you can register your votes, enter your votes. All right, that's approved. Okay, there's a motion and second for the purchases to be approved. Is there any one that anyone would like pulled? All right, if you put that on the screen. And Deputy City Manager, if you would go over item three and the purchases while the councillor is voting.
Absolutely. Item three is the donation of two K-9 ballistic vests. Again, for the police department, each vest costs thirteen hundred dollars each. The purchases, the first is an Amendment Eight for Space Planning and Programming and Design Professional Services. This is for the Government Center project, and this is strictly a correction of a heading that was created at the last, for resolution number zero seventy dash twenty-five. So, all we're doing is correcting the heading and the dollar amount on that one. Item B is a contract extension for concessionaire services for the Government Center. Right now, we have Chester's Barbecue, that is the concessionaire. We're looking to extend their contract through August of twenty twenty-six, at which time the Judicial Center should be coming on board, and we will issue an RFP at that time. Item C are five I Plan Table Work Sessions for the Engineering Department, which would just provide greater technology for them in terms of plans and other things.
All right, councillor Hickie, did you have something?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Madam Deputy Clerk, City Manager, I mean Deputy City Manager, is Mr. Pruitt in today, Ryan?
Yes.
Yes, you have him come up, I just want to ask a question. Hey, Mr. Pruitt, how you doing today, sir?
Good.
All right, thank you for all that you do. One, I got a question. I know that you and I've been communicating along with Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge about the Patriot Apartments out there with all the issues that they're having with some of the tenants not having air conditioning and roofs are leaking and things like that. I spoke with Miss Carr, and I think she's reached out to you all, and in your response to me, you said that you all have already cited them one time. What is the process in citing them, and how many times can we do it before we can get these landlords to comply and to help these residents out out there?
So, and thank you for the question, and good afternoon, Members of Council. So, the ordinances is laid out in Chapter Eight of the City's Code for Property Maintenance Cases between landlord and tenants. Essentially, when we get involved, we'll go complete an inspection of the unit, document any issues of the Property Maintenance Code that has been adopted by City Council, so we are currently under the twenty eighteen Property Maintenance Code. Any violations that we see, we document those and are required to notify the landlord of those violations and give them a reasonable time to correct those violations. So, every violation, again, it's up to the code enforcement officer what a reasonable amount of time is. You know, if there's a roof leak, you know, that may be thirty, sixty days depending on the severity of the leak. You know, obviously, you can get a roof patch done pretty quick, but replacing an entire roof, you know, is a longer process for a property owner. So, code enforcement will specify that in the written order to the landlord, you know, for issues of heat or no hot water or no air conditioning. You know, typically, it's going to be a forty-eight, seventy-two hour warning to get that resolved or through other alternate means of compliance such as bringing in a window unit, a portable AC, something to, you know, at least resolve the issue temporarily while the permanent fix is being worked on. So, code enforcement will work with the tenant and landlord. If the landlord fails to comply within that timeframe, then we can cite the landlord for that violation. And of course, you know, we cite him today, the court date's not for a couple of weeks. And then, you know, we could cite him, go back, cite him every day that it is not corrected. And then, of course, it'll be up to the judge in Environmental Court what an appropriate penalty would be.
And so, if you go back out and cite them again, and, I mean, in her case, you know, she's been there with her kids for two months now, and as she told me when I talked to her yesterday that this past weekend inside her apartment, it got up to ninety-four degrees inside of her apartment, and that the portable unit that they put in, it stopped working as well. And I was just wondering, she's in a lease agreement, and I don't know whether this would be something that could be decided at the court level. But, you know, when you have these situations where these landlords are not doing what they supposed to be doing, and people are paying their rent, you know, to stay there, I think at some point, they should be able to get out of that lease and at least move somewhere that's, you know, that's going to work for them and their family, you know? And I was just wondering, with this particular property, currently, you only cited them one time, right?
To my knowledge, yes.
To your knowledge, just one time, okay? And when you said that forty-eight hours when dealing with AC units and things like that, have y'all considered citing them again and bringing them back into court on this issue?
You know, I do know that, and I'm not, you know, last time I looked into it was Friday, so I'm not sure what action code enforcement took, you know, yesterday or this morning in regards to Miss Carr's case. And we have issued additional citations at that particular property for other units as well over the last couple of years. So certainly, you know, if they're continuing to fail to comply, you know, on a serious matter like that, we will continue, you know, to bring the enforcement measures. The minimum penalty in Environmental Court is, you know, five hundred dollars for the first offense and then a thousand dollars for the second offense. And, you know, we can cite them for multiple code sections, you know, if they have leaks or different issues going on. So, we will, you know, hold them to account as much as we can. You know, issues with the lease and breaking the lease or going and finding and finding alternate accommodations, you know, those will all ultimately end up being civil issues between the tenant and the landlord to, you know, work out. But we will continue to follow up and, you know, hold them accountable as much as we can.
One last question. So, as a city, what do we do when we have landlords that just ignoring the codes? You know, they doing what they want to do, and I think sometime they're referred to as slum lords. What do we do to deal with those landlords and allowing them to continue to have a business license? Or, you know, I mean, how do we, how do we deal with them?
So, you know, Director Alexander mentioned earlier, you know, people that rent residential property, you know, are not required to get a business license. You know, in addition, state law does not allow us to create any type of rental registry or any type of proactive, you know, inspection. You know, other states, they do have the ability to go inspect rental property, you know, every handful of years kind of proactively, you know, to catch issues before they become problems. So, you know, we're totally reactive, you know, when tenants are in there, you know, working with the tenant and enforcing the Property Maintenance Code. You know, if there are severe, you know, life safety issues, you know, immediate fire hazards, those things, we do work, you know, with United Way and Home for Good for those tenants that, you know, can't afford, you know, to find alternate accommodations or things like that. We do work with those nonprofits to try to get people to move out. You know, if we have to go condemn something for somebody's safety, you know, we work with those nonprofits to facilitate that and try to find people, alternate housing, and then again, just try to enforce the code as much as possible. You know, out of town, we talk about all the time with out-of-town owners, vacant property as well. You know, out-of-town landlords do make it more difficult, you know, to serve them personally and those types of things. The state did pass a law that requires landlords of certain size to have an in-state representative now. So, that's something that'll be coming online here, here soon.
Well, thank you very much for all that you do, and I, and I just hope that, you know, we can do everything that we can as a city to stay on top of this and help that family because, you know, I just can't even imagine being in the house with ninety-four degree temperature, you know? That's, that's, you know, that's crazy. That's insane.
And I, yeah, if there's any, you know, issues, again, some tenants don't know that this is a service the city provides and a code that we have on the books. So, certainly, you need to notify your landlord first if you have any maintenance issues that they are responsible for. You know, give them a chance to respond and fix it. But if the landlord does fail to respond after you notified them, please reach out to my office and we'll set up an inspection.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councillor Huff?
Deputy City Manager, a good one.
Yes.
I'll forward you some information. I, it was brought to my attention this morning, but I actually rode through on Saturday on Wells Drive, sitting between Seventeenth Street and Macon Road. There's a sinkhole development there that's really, really getting bad. It's look like a square that they tried to pad, it's sinking in the middle. And if you hit it like I almost did Saturday, it's going to tear up a few things on the front end of your car. So, if you would, check on that for me, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councillor Tucker?
Yes, I was, I was trying to get councillor, councillor, me Hickie to ask how many times Patriots Point, we've had issues with them because I have it in my email too, back in June, actually, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, where we had to go out and it was multiple units where they had no AC and the AC, the HVAC was down from that year in twenty twenty-three since March. So, I know that we have several of these apartment complexes that are habitual offenders, and we've had this conversation a long time now. And I know for one that was in my district, we was kind of, I know we say that we can't do too much proactive, but we were looking at staying on them because they was not paying the water, you know? So, so many things that they weren't paying for those individuals. But if we could, because I know a lot of times we have to take stuff up to the state. But when we have evidence and data showing how often we've submitted this for Patriots Point, I can't think of that one that's on Floyd Road that we've had to address the water being shut off. The one that's up off Macon Road with Crystal Lake, that little area. Crystal Valley, where their water has been shut off multiple times. Certain areas, I think in councillorman Huff and Cogle's area where water has been shut down. And I've even heard now Ralston has had some issues as of recently. But providing that data, and I'm gonna keep saying it, July eighteenth is our time as the legislative body to go to ACCG and speak about the issues that we have that we want to move up to the state. It's best, it's best to have one hundred and fifty-nine counties together sounding the alarm at the same time than just us. So, these are times for us to come and speak with our colleagues, you know, in this region to ACCG, and they're taking the time out to come, and actually, they've never been here for a legislative time, and they're coming to Columbus. So, you know, we can have those type of conversations. So, let's decide what we want to move up, you know, far as legislation. But if we could capture some data regarding those in reference to code enforcement, how many times, you know, they're not picking up the trash? You know, they're not paying the trash, whatever that part. So, collecting that data, that'd be helpful. And I have one other concern, and I'm not sure how we can do this. I don't know if it's a city attorney, but Patricia Liddell sent me a text message in regards to, it looks like it may have been an ordinance, and I'm not, I'm not sure. I told her I had no, I have no idea, but it was back in May of twenty twenty-three where we created an ordinance for veterans who are buried in East Portidale Papa's Grave. If they have to be exhumed, those fees would be waived. Do we know anything in reference to that, in reference to an ordinance? Because can, can you bring that back? Yeah, so that was one of the things. I think it's a veteran there now who was buried there, and they're trying to put that veteran in, in a proper location with other veterans over there in Fort Mitchell.
And we'll take the other as a referral for director approval.
Thank you.
All right. See any more individuals on, on the queue. So, we'll move the clerk of council's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just for the record, on items three and four on the City Manager's agenda, councillor Anker was in favor.
Okay.
For the clerk's agenda, item one are minutes of various boards, ready to be received.
Motion, second to receive minutes from the boards. Anyone have one they want to pull or edit? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Is there any opposed? All right, they're received.
Next, we have board appointments. First, we have the mayor's appointments, and any nominations may be confirmed at this meeting. We have the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority. Mr. Mayor did inform me yesterday that he is currently working on his CPA and the law enforcement representatives. Next, we have the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees. There's a vacant position for the representative of the business community. And then, we still need a nominee for the Youth Advisory Council.
Do have that. Katie Dodson, CHS, I'll get a bio to her, get it submitted.
All right, and she may be confirmed.
Motion, second to confirm. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, she's confirmed.
Next, we have appointments that nominations may be confirmed by councillor at this meeting. For the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority, councillor Cogle is nominating Morgan Moore on behalf of the Trade Center.
Is there a motion to confirm? Motion, second to confirm. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, they're confirmed.
And we are still waiting on a nominee for the Fort Benning representative. Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. For the Downtown Development Authority, Bruce McPherson may be confirmed.
Motion, second to confirm. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
And Cheryl Tate is being nominated to serve another term on the Retiree Health Benefits Committee. She may be confirmed.
Motion and second to confirm, Ms. Tate. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have council district seats, and any nominations may be confirmed at this meeting. For the Community Development Advisory Council, the District One seat is currently vacant. Thank you, sir. For the Youth Advisory Council, we need nominees for districts one, two, three, four, five, seven, and, excuse me, nine and ten. Councillor Tucker is nominating Javi Moore from Shaw High School, and we, this nominee may be confirmed.
Motion, second to confirm, Mr. Moore. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Yes, councillor.
Yes, sir. Councillor Hickie?
Madam Clerk, I would like to, for District One, nominate Megan Hatcher.
Hamilton?
Hatcher.
Hatcher.
And she may be confirmed.
Is there a motion, a motion and a, here, a second? Is there a motion, motion and a, here, second? Second to confirm, Ms. Hatcher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments and nominations will be listed at the next meeting. For the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority, we have the promotional entity that focuses on professional hockey. Then, we have a vacant seat on the Downtown Development Authority. Keep Columbus Beautiful, we have a vacant seat for one of the representatives for Senatorial District 15. New Horizons, Judge Raniere does not desire reappointment. And on the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, Tom Baron is not eligible to serve another term. And that's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We do have, before I call, before I call Ms. Mallard back, I couldn't look for you. Let me make a couple of very quick announcements. There's a lot going on in the city this week. The 250th birthday of the United States Army is this week, and there's a number of events going on, to include Night of the Museum and also the Nuver Center of Excellence Army Ball. The Night of the Museum's on Friday, and the ball is on Saturday. They're also going to be throwing, I think General Tully's throwing out the first pitch at the baseball game. We also have a lot of young ladies who are very talented and poised in town. Miss Georgia and Miss Georgia Team Contest, Scholarship Contest is going to be from Wednesday, the 12th, through Saturday, the 15th, I believe. So, I would urge you to drop in on one or more of those events, support the organizations that are hosting them, and find something different to do in Columbus for this week. Now, Ms. Mallard, you're welcome to come back up. I apologize. You'll have, now, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me come back up.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in conclusion, for those of you that believe, if you have witnessed wrongdoing and not spoken up, if you have allowed the guilty to go unpunished, if you as professed believers in the word of God and His only-begotten Son, Jesus Christ of Nazareth, if you participated in the silencing of those who hear and obey the voice of God, if you honor relationship over repentance and secrecy over sanctification, God is not mocked. You and your households are also under judgment. The future of this city starts with you. The Bible says, "If my people, which are called by My name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek My face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sins and will heal their land." That's 2 Chronicles 7:14. May revival spread through this city in the days to come. That's the conclusion. Thank you all.
Ms. Mallard, thank you. All right, if there's no other business that needs to come before the council, I understand a motion. Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We adjourn.